Your worship, we're just waiting for a couple members.
Okay, thank you. Are we all here, City Clerk? I don't see Jerry. Oh, I don't see Counselor Low.
Just one more.
He's there. All right, City Clerk, you let me know when you're ready, and I will call the meeting to order.
Your worship, we're ready to call the meeting to order.
Thank you, so I'll call the meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for joining us, and it's the inaugural meeting of 2022 for your council, and it's a great agenda tonight. There's a lot of wonderful items in it. It's a lot of good news, so looking forward to it. We're going to start off, sorry, City Clerk, I'll let you call our first item. Or am I going to call the land acknowledgement? I can't remember. It's been so long since I've been here.
Land acknowledgement first, your worship.
Okay, land acknowledgement, I'm going to pass that over to Counselor Sullivan this evening. Thank you, Counselor.
You're welcome, your worship and council. The land on which the city of St. John or Mennequist is situated is the traditional territory of the Wollasteweeque. The Wollasteweeque, along with their indigenous neighbors, the Mi'kmaq, Pasco-Tomacati, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s that protected their rights to lands and resources. Let us pause and reflect.
Okay, thank you. Next item, City Clerk?
Thank you, your worship. I would just ask our guest, Mr. McKenzie, if you could please turn off your camera until we get to the public hearing. And so, your worship, the first item on the agenda, we had approval of a minute. They are not prepared for this meeting, so that will carry over to next. Next item is item three on your agenda, and that is the approval of the agenda with one addition from Committee of the Whole, and that addition involves a recommendation with respect to security, information, and event management agreement approval.
Okay, thank you, City Clerk. So I will need a motion to approve the agenda, Counselor Killen and Counselor Hickey, on the question. All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried? Next item?
Next item is disclosures of conflict of interest, if any council members have one.
Not seeing any conflict of interest. Next item?
Next item is item five, the consent agenda.
Deputy, over to you, please, for the consent agenda.
Thank you, your worship. I would move 5.1 through to 5.7.
Need a seconder on that, please, Counselor Sullivan. And on the question, I have Counselor Radwan up first. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mayor, and through to City Manager. 5.1, actually, so there's a public hearing requested for 2626 Locklin Road and 1781 B-Side Drive. I'm just wondering, when it comes to process, if we're able to somehow pull these out of the consent agenda? And the reason why I'm asking is I have seen it done where this is getting read off at council. So it's almost like making an announcement at the same time. It's just one other way of communicating to the public. And there's normally no questions on them because, you know, everybody wants these public hearings to go through. But I know, you know, that's something that Moncton is doing, and it seems to be working really well. Just wondering if that's something that we could get done in the future.
If I may, through you, your worship, to the counselor. Short answer is yes, we could. Our attempt is to try to abbreviate council meetings because, as you can appreciate it, ours are quite long because of the extensive material we have at each of our council members. If it becomes the will of council that we read these into the public record instead of them just being on the consent agenda, we could certainly do so. Perhaps this is a discussion for council to have at another point in time to see if we wish to proceed that way. I, there's, procedurally, there's nothing preventing us from doing it. It's just a question of time.
I'd appreciate that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Is that it then? Any questions? All right, so I have the motions on the floor on the question. All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried? Thank you. All right, City Clerk, next item?
Yes, next item, we have item six on the agenda, Members' Comments.
Thank you, City Clerk. So we'll take Members' Comments, and remember, we have the two-minute speed round. And Counselor Sullivan is up first.
I kind of feel like sometimes I'm Walter Safety in these, and I'm going to be Walter Safety again. First of all, we certainly understand that people are chomping at the bit to enjoy the great outdoors of St. John, and especially our Rockwood Park. But just a reminder, as much as we want to go skating on Lily Lake, we need to be a little bit patient until it is safe to go skating on Lily Lake. So make sure you have signed up for your St. John announcements emails. Check our website often or our Twitter feed. And as soon as Lily Lake is safe for us to go skating, we will make the announcements, and then we'll see you all out there for skating and hot chocolate. And unfortunately, this is something I talk about every week, but we need to be reminded. This coronavirus latest variant moves fast and frequent, and gosh, our hospitals are becoming very overwhelmed with the numbers of people who are experiencing COVID. So wear your masks, find the safest mask you can. If it's an N95, a Can95, whatever it is. Make sure you're social distancing, keeping your household numbers and contacts low, and do everything you can. But that being said, I challenged my students this before Christmas. For those of us who are comfortable online, make sure you use your powers for good and connect with those people who may not be, or if there are folks around you who aren't as technologically sound as you might be. Do we a kid to help people out so that they can still connect with people? So that, you know, we're missing that human contact. For those of us who are nerds, we're able to overcome it. So be kind, be helpful, be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I have Counselor Hickey up next.
Thank you, your worship. I'm certainly happy, wishing everyone a Happy New Year as we launch our council sitting for the new year. I wanted to offer some congratulations to begin. Mohammed Karalah opened Roda Cana Coffee at Market Square this past week, which has been pretty exciting, certainly a friend of the Radwans as their coffee supplier, but also a new business owner in St. John, which is pretty exciting to have that, and certainly an immigrant business as well opening. And also putting on my public safety hat. Wanted to commend, you know, through a huge snowstorm. We had quite a story of heroism, one of a couple of our firefighters that traveled around social media quite a bit. I'm sure everyone's seen it. Of the two St. John firefighters who carried out a young child with difficulty breathing through the blizzard after the ambulance was stuck on a seemingly impassable road. So pretty impressive story. From my understanding, you know, they took turns carrying the person as they brought them to the ambulance. So I thought that was quite a harrowing story and wanted to recognize the, our frontline workers, you know, certainly our city crews who were responding to the snowstorm, but also our emergency crews too for doing their part. It's a pretty harrowing story. Anyway, back to you, back to your worship. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Hickey, and thank you so much for your kind words to the rescue team. Okay, over to Counselor Radwan.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just wanted to first wish everybody a Happy New Year. Hopefully, 2022 will be a little bit brighter as we try to get rid of this Omnicron. I wanted to let everybody know that tomorrow night at 8:00 PM, I am going to be inviting Mohammed Bagah to come online on Facebook with me to talk about the services and programs that they have at the St. John Newcomer Center. So please join me online for that. And last but not least, I really wanted to welcome the new students that have come into St. John at UNB and NBCC. One of our previous mayors used, Elsie Wayne, used to call the city "the greatest little city in the east", and I can't say it enough that we definitely are. So welcome, welcome to our beautiful city, and I wish you lots of success in your programs.
Thank you, Counselor. Over to Counselor Killen.
Thank you, your worship. So Happy New Year, everyone. Very exciting to be back. It's been awesome getting back in the mix of things here. So on that note, I just wanted to say that the new ethno-cultural grants are actually now open. So these are for folks, for newcomers in the community, or maybe not so much a newcomer. You've been here for a while, but you want to build an organization around your own cultural group. The city has some funding available for you to do that, which is really awesome and exciting. So that is up online now on the city's website. And so also, congratulations to all the grant recipients from the Community Arts Board. So the winter grant recipients were announced, and there's lots of really COVID-friendly art projects and things that are going to be happening this winter as a result of that. So some really, really wonderful things happening in the arts community as well, despite all the challenges. It actually is proving that creativity holds no bounds. So that's it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Deputy McKenzie?
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to let people know that the One Stop Development Shop closed out 2021 with 699 permit applications at a value of $116.8 million. To put that in a visual for you, there were 422 new residential units created in the city in 2021, and that's compared to the five-year average of 189. So we're doing more than double the five-year average just in 2021, and we all look forward to a more successful 2022. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, deputy. That's all good news. Counselor Norton?
Thank you, your worship. I know it's a little bit before Christmas when this news came out, but still should be front and center as we look at ever-increasing costs in some areas that we were able to reduce our costs specifically in the area of property tax. And just a reminder, just if it even hits one or two people that are unfamiliar with this, that common council, along with top-shelf professional staff, were able to reduce the property tax rate from $1.78 down to $1.71 per $100 of assessed value. And it's the lowest tax rate in 24 years, and puts us about three years ahead of what our financial projections would have had us being in terms of our long-term financial plan and the tax rate target. And also, there are some, there are some areas where you can get rid of that Christmas tree. If it's starting to dry, and it's not fun taking it out, especially when you're sweeping up after those needles, but it's the cross we all bear to have some fun during the holiday season, and you can drop those off and have some legal dumping around the Peter Murray Arena on 711 Deverre Road, the Forest Hills Ball Field, Crescent Valley between 30 and 38 Taylor Avenue and the Charles Gorman Arena. I also believe the old sugar refinery site has an area as well. So get your Christmas tree there, and I believe that we'll make good use of that, mulch them up, and make sure they're properly disposed of. So thanks very much, and the city crews that clean up those sites after the fact. So thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor. That's a job for me this week. Mine's still up. Anyways, I'll get there. I also want to wish everyone a Happy New Year and all the best for 22 for happiness and especially for good health, especially in these times right now where we certainly know the impact of having our health threatened. So I will also say really quickly that with this team, as you've heard, there's a lot of really positive things happening in the city. So I'll say to everyone watching, buckle your seatbelt because there's lots more of this coming your way over the next few months. Okay, common City Clerk, next item?
Your worship, next, we had a presentation booked. The presenter has been scheduled for 7:45. After that, we have public hearings, which cannot start until 6:30. So I'd suggest we move over to bylaw approvals. Item 10.1 would be the first one, and that's for zoning bylaw amendment with Section 59 conditions at 141 Hawthorne Avenue. And Commissioner Hamilton can give a brief overview of this.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner, over to you, please.
Your worship, members of council, before you for third reading, an approval of Section 59 conditions is a planning application, which is requesting to rezone a property located at 141 Hawthorne Avenue in the city's north end from the two-unit residential zone to the low-rise residential zone. And the purpose of the application is to enable the conversion of a former hair salon to a third residential unit. The application received first and second reading following the required public hearing on December 13, 2021, and I can confirm for you that all other legislative requirements have been met. And with that, I'll turn it back over to your worship for the required motions.
Okay, thank you so much. So City Clerk, I believe we need three motions this evening. So I'll get you to call the first motion.
Yes, your worship, first motion would be third reading in its entirety.
Third reading in its entirety. I need the deputy and Counselor Sullivan on the question. All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried? Next, oh, sorry, you go ahead, City Clerk.
Just read it quickly, your worship. Yes, a law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John. The zoning bylaw of the city of St. John enacted on the 15th day of December 2014 is amended by amending Schedule A, the zoning map of the city of St. John by rezoning a parcel of land with an area of approximately 2,140 square meters located at 141 Hawthorne Avenue, also identified as pit number 00031450 and 55069553 from two-unit residential to low-rise residential pursuant to a resolution adopted by council under Section 59 of the Community Planning Act. Next motion, your worship, would be approval of the Section 59 conditions.
Okay, approval of Section 59 conditions. I need a motion, and a mover and a seconder, Counselor Stewart and Counselor Sullivan on the question. All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried?
And the final motion is a reading, third reading by title.
Third reading by title. Counselor Hickey and Counselor Low on the question. All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried?
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Next item?
The next bylaw reading, your worship, is 10.2 on your agenda, and this is a zoning bylaw amendment, again with the Section 59 conditions at 576 to 578 Fundy Drive. Again, Commissioner Hamilton will give a brief overview.
Thank you. Over to you, Commissioner.
Yes, your worship, and members of council, before you for third reading, an approval of Section 59 conditions is a rezoning application for a property located at 576 578 Fundy Drive, located in West St. John. The purpose of the rezoning is to legalize an existing four-unit residential building. The application received first and second reading following the required public hearing on November 29. At that time, staff did recommend a delay of third reading to allow for an inspection of the building and to ensure building code compliance. And with that inspection now complete, and the chief building inspector satisfied with the outcome, the council can now proceed with third reading. And all other legislative requirements have been met. With that, I'll turn it back over to your worship for the required motions.
Thank you. So I need three motions this evening. City Clerk, I'll get you to call the first motion.
Your worship, first motion for this is a third reading in its entirety.
Third reading in entirety. I need a mover and a seconder, Counselor Hickey, Counselor Killen, on the question. All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried?
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John. The zoning bylaw of the city of St. John enacted on the 15th day of December 2014 is amended by amending Schedule A, the zoning map of the city of St. John by rezoning a parcel of land having an area of approximately 1,105 square meters located at 576 578 Fundy Drive, also identified as pit number 00384909 from one-unit residential to low-rise residential pursuant to a resolution adopted by common council under Section 59 of the Community Planning Act. Next motion, your worship, would be approval of the Section 59 conditions.
Approval of Section 59 conditions. Counselor Killen, Counselor Radwan on the question. All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried?
And a final motion for approval by title.
Approval by title, Counselor Sullivan and Counselor Ogden on the question. All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Okay, next item, City Clerk?
Think we have time for one more quick one, your worship? So next is 10.3 zoning bylaw amendment, 325 Main Street. Commissioner Hamilton will give a brief introduction.
Yes, your worship, members of council, before you for third reading is an application to rezone a property located at 325 Main Street in the city's north end from mixed commercial to the urban center residential zone. The purpose of the rezoning is to recognize an existing five-unit residential development as permitted use, so the building conforms with the zoning bylaw in order to facilitate sale of the property. The application received first and second reading following the public hearing on December 13, 2021, and I can confirm that all our other legislative requirements have been met, and it's before you for third reading. With that, I'll turn it back over to your worship for the required motions.
Thank you very much. So I need two motions. City Clerk, first motion?
For this item, your worship, we need a motion for third reading in its entirety and a motion by title.
Okay, so first one, third reading by entirety, Counselor Killen and the deputy on the question. All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried?
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John. The zoning bylaw of the city of St. John enacted on the 15th day of December 2014 is amended by amending Schedule A, the zoning map of the city of St. John by rezoning a parcel of land having an area of approximately 220 square meters located at 325 Main Street, also identified as pit number 000370528 from mixed commercial to urban center residential. And now a reading by title, your worship.
Reading by title? Counselor Sullivan and Counselor Stewart again on the question. All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried?
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
All right, next item, City Clerk?
Your worship, it's now 6:30, and we do have our public hearings, which we've advertised. So the first item under public hearings is 9.1 on your agenda, and this is for a proposed zoning bylaw amendment at 166 Leinster Street. And Commissioner Hamilton will give the introduction to this law.
Commissioner Hamilton, over to you, please.
Your worship, members of council, before you for public hearing this evening is a planning application submitted by Camo McKenzie Architecture on behalf of Greg Collins. It's for a zoning bylaw amendment to increase the maximum building height for a property at 166 Leinster Street. The purpose of the application is to permit the development of a mid-rise 35-unit residential development on a vacant property in the city's south end. The application has been considered by the Planning Advisory Committee on December 14. And before you are recommendations from both staff and the committee to approve the amendment based on the policies in the city's municipal plan and secondary plan. Jennifer Brown is here this evening under capacity as a planner with Dilling Consulting, who's working on behalf of the city to deliver tonight's staff presentation. And with that as an introduction, I'll turn it over to Ms. Brown to deliver tonight's presentation. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Jen, over to you.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Commissioner Hamilton. As the commissioner noted, we're here this evening to discuss an application at 166 Leinster Street. The proposal is for a six-story, 35-unit building made up of six one-bedroom units and 29 two-bedroom units. Their overall height of the proposed building is 20.6 meters from average grade, with the maximum height being 22.21 meters on the Princess Street frontage. The building is designed to have a defined base, middle, and top, and through the use of materials and color variation. The proposal includes 15 underground parking spots with three surface parking spots. There is bicycle parking provided in the underground parking garage as well as a fitness room on the first floor. The proposed development's located at the intersection of Leinster, Princess, and Crown Streets. The site's located at the bottom of a hill with the elevation change of about two to three meters between the subject site and the neighboring property. Here you see the site looking south from Crown Street and a view of the site from the intersection of Princess and Crown Streets. The site is within the medium-to-high-density residential designation in Plan SJ, and as mentioned, it's also considered under the Central Peninsula Secondary Plan. It's in the urban center residential zone. The applicant has requested an amendment to the Central Peninsula height map to increase that allowable height from 14 meters to 20.6 meters. The applicants also requested several variances, including a variance to the Central Peninsula building height massing overlay zone to remove a required three-meter step back at 14-meter elevation. So the big item here is the height map. So to give you some context, the height map applies a 14-meter height maximum in areas outside of what's designated the uptown kind of neighborhood, if we want to call it a neighborhood. Typically, urban design best practice allows for a one-to-one ratio between height and street width. Here, we're looking at Crown Street, and it's undeveloped and unloaded on the frontage across the street from the subject site. The increased height, therefore, has less of an impact on street level experience. So natural light can still continue to filter down to the pedestrian environment, and wind tunneling is limited because of that unloaded side. The topography of the area is significantly sloped with elevation changes between three to five meters in the general area and two to three meters on the subject site. The elevation changes allow the height and mass of the building to feel much less visually impactful when moving past the building at street level. Should also be noted that the design of the building uses a defined base, middle, and top to help establish that comfortable street wall along that stretch of Crown Street, which is currently vacant. So with respect to the variances, as I noted previously, the proposed development required several variances, including the removal of that three-meter step back. In terms of kind of an explanation there, the intention of a step back is to ensure that comfortable and human-scale street wall. The requirement is typically used when you're looking at both sides of the street being developed. It's a way to ensure that there's no sense of enclosure there, and there's no kind of wind tunneling. And those kind of conditions can be avoided with that step back. So in this case, again, we have an unloaded side. Additional variances were requested at both the Planning Advisory Committee and Development Officer level to accommodate certain design elements. and Development Officer level to accommodate certain design elements. The Planning Advisory Committee variances were approved at their December 14th meeting. Development Officer variances are generally supportable and will be provided through the development permitting process. Letters were circulated to surrounding properties, and one email was received by the public. Considering the design of the proposed building and the topography of the subject site, specifically that change in elevation, as well as the building's position on an unloaded side of Crown Street, the proposal appears to be in keeping with the general intention of the city's guiding policy documents as well as the zoning bylaw. Staff and PAC are recommending council approve the requested amendment to the height map, increasing that allowable height at the subject site from 14 meters to 20.6 meters. As previously noted, PAC has approved those variances requested as part of the application. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. So I will now open the public hearing, and I will ask if there is anyone here, registered or not, who would like to speak against the application. Is there anyone here who would like to speak against the application at 166 Leinster Street? Anyone like to speak against this application? I believe we didn't have anyone registered to speak against the application. So I'll ask now if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the application. And we do have, I believe, two people registered to speak in favor of the application. Here we go. Okay, Mr. McKenzie.
Good evening. Good evening, your worship, and members of council. This is yet another example of an infill development, which are very beneficial to the neighborhoods, in our opinion. It takes underutilized land and makes it an asset to the community and part of the approach to repopulating the inner city and all of the good things that flow through to that with that. The lot had been for sale for some years. We're just beginning to find out a few little geotechnical challenges, but nothing that's going to upset us all that badly. And so beyond that, your worship, I'm here to answer questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. McKenzie? You're the architect on the job. Oh, I do have a question for you, Mr. McKenzie, Councilor Redwan.
Thank you, Mayor Ruden. Through you to Mr. McKenzie. I just wanted to first ask you, how many accessible units are planned for your building?
I believe we've provided two.
Okay. It was just, it was not very clear in the drawing. Sometimes they're a little bit more clear. Would they be on the ground floor?
One of them is, and one of them is one story up. It is, in fact, an elevated building. So, and it's got a fairly small floor plate as dictated by the site.
Okay, that's great. And do you have any idea, just, you know, an estimate of what that you think that the rent might be going for on your units?
That would be sort of better answered by Mr. Collins if he's online here. But essentially, we are still exploring construction and other costing opportunities. It's a very fluid marketplace right now in terms of inflationary influences on both the materials and labor side of things. And so ultimately, that's a story written.
No, that's, that's great. No, thank you. I know it's difficult because the costs are changing all the time, so it's probably hard to guesstimate that. But I think the building looks fantastic. It'll be great to see a new building on this empty lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Hickey?
Thank you, your worship, through you to Mr. McKenzie. Peter, I've gotten in the habit of asking this question at every one of these. Can you clarify what material the siding is going to be made out of?
The siding is going to be primarily cementitious board in panel form as well as a stone product, a manufactured stone product on the lower levels.
Excellent. Nice to, nice to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Mr. McKenzie, it looks like that's it for questions for you. Appreciate you being here with us this evening.
Thank you, your worship.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the application? Mr. Collins, are you in the audience? Anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in favor of the application? I hope it's safe to close. Oh, councillor Low, oh, sorry. Councillor Low, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, yeah, I was gonna ask Mr. Collins when they hope to begin, but if he's not there, I'll go back and ask Peter. When do they hope to break ground there on Crown Street?
Through you, your worship, to councillor Low. We are working towards a spring start. And so my days are filled with preparatory work for that. We've got meetings lined up with all of the consultants, and they were doing detailed budgeting and materials options. So we would intend to be on the ground, digging through the ash and rubble that we found for the mid-April.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, that's great. I will close the public hearing then, and I will open the floor for questions to Jennifer Brown, who did the presentation of the project, or for staff. Councillor Redwan?
Thank you, Mayor Ruden. I actually did, I was hoping to pose a question to Commissioner Hamilton if I could. So there's actually, so there's two accessible units here, and it's my understanding that by the National Building Code, people are required to have one for every 20 units. So that's a little bit more. Just a question on process, and I don't want it interpreted that I'm asking necessarily for this specific project, but just process in general. If somebody did not follow the National Building Code, and I know that you already have building inspectors who have looked at these plans, what would happen?
Yes, your worship, through you to the councillor. Certainly, there are requirements for this proposal to meet the building code, and that's carried forward in council's building bylaw. There are also provincial regulations that apply for things like barrier-free access requirements, and there are compliance measures in place. The city has a deposit scheme as part of the building permit process that enhances our ability for compliance. We can actually hold back funds if compliance is not achieved. And we have a system of inspections, and ultimately occupancy is tied to the applicant meeting the requirements of the permit. So there's a number of checks and balances in place. And I will add, like, this is really just at the planning approval stage, and we're looking at this from the perspective of land use and how it relates to the municipal plan. But as it moves forward into the permitting process, we'll get into specifics, requirements related to building code, building bylaw, and other municipal bylaws.
That's great, Commissioner. And I do see that it's very obvious that there's two wheelchair parking spaces, which I think is all that's required as well. Is that not right?
Yes, there are requirements, as you mentioned, for every 20 units, a requirement for a barrier-free unit and/or a part thereof. So therefore, in this case, there are two required in terms of accessible units as well as parking to support those units. So those are both requirements that'll come forward as part of the permitting process.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. I appreciate Scott's work. Thank you.
Councillor Low?
Yeah, just for the other councillors that wouldn't know, this was definitely an unsightly dump-in site for many years in the south end, very visible off Crown Street, because anybody coming to the south end would come up Crown, down Crown. So this is an excellent project. I think that's what Peter meant when he said they're digging the ground to find out what's there. God only knows what is there anyways. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Okay, seeing no more questions, I'm going to require two motions. So I will ask the City Clerk to declare the motions for us.
Your worship, we would require a motion to give first and second reading. So first motion is for first reading by title.
First reading by title, councillor Low and councillor Redwan, on the question. All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Thank you, and I'll have a second reading by title. Motion for second reading by title, councillor Ogden and councillor Harris, on the question. All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Thank you. Next item, City Clerk.
Next, we have another public hearing, your worship, item 9.2 on the agenda. And this is a proposed zoning bylaw amendment at the address 35 Water Street. Commissioner Hamilton will again provide an introduction.
Commissioner, over to you.
Good evening, your worship, members of council. Before you is a public hearing for a planning application, which has been submitted by Fundy Harbor Group for the Fundy Key site located at 35 Water Street. The proposal involves a rezoning to the waterfront commercial integrated development zone and as well as related zoning bylaw amendments to the height schedule in the zoning bylaw and Section 59 amendments. The application will permit the development of a high-density mixed-use development on the Fundy Key site with up to 677 residential units. The project is very much a catalytic project for the city and has been identified as one of the big moves in the Central Peninsula Secondary Plan. The application was considered by the Planning Advisory Committee on December 14th, 2021. And before you are recommendations from staff and the committee to approve the rezoning and related amendments based on the policies that are in the city's municipal plan and secondary plan. The recommendation proposes a phased approach to the approvals that both unlock the potential to move forward with the first phase while ensuring future phases are subject to council and public review. With that as an introduction, I will turn things over to Mark Reed, senior planner, who will be delivering the staff presentation this evening.
Over to you, Mark.
Thank you, Jack, and your worship. The application before you this evening, as Jack said, is a rezoning for the Fundy Key site. Bear with me here. The applicant is proposing to basically develop a mixed-use development, which would include five buildings and provide up to 677 dwelling units with a mix of commercial and cultural uses. The floor area of the development is approximately 69,000 square meters, and it would have internal parkades that the applicant is proposing to include a maximum of 350 parking spaces. The heights of the proposed buildings will range from six-story or 25 meters up to 19 stories, which is 70 meters. The project will be constructed in phases, with the first phase being the southeast building shown here. The massing, again, incorporates a podium and a tower with active ground floor uses. The proposed design also incorporates angle parking along the western side of Water Street and a relocated and elevated sidewalk along Water Street. These are just a couple of drawings here showing the height with respect to the massing of the podium and the towers. The site and neighborhood, it's the previous use of the site, the Coast Guard site for many years. There are three parcels of land, and the office building and maintenance space for the Coast Guard was recently demolished, and more recently, it was used as an interim parking lot as the development program was being developed. It's designated as Uptown Primary Center in the city municipal plan. And within this area, we seek to have the highest intensity mixed-use development in the city. Development on the site is also governed by the Central Peninsula Secondary Plan, which really recognizes development on the site is a big move and a strategic and catalytic project for the city. The proposed development introduces a mixed-use concept on a key waterfront development site in our central peninsula, and the increased residential density and commercial uses provide additional development and population within one of our key primary centers. Given this, the proposal conforms to many key directions and policies in the municipal plan and Central Peninsula Secondary Plan. Based on the assessment of the proposal by staff with respect to the policies of the municipal and secondary plan, staff are of the opinion the proposed development conforms to both the municipal and secondary plan. The site, a small portion of the site shown in red in the northeast corner is currently zoned uptown commercial with the bulk of the site zoned waterfront commercial. The proposal calls for the site to be rezoned to waterfront commercial integrated development, and this co-zone accommodates mixed-use waterfront development primarily located at large ground-filled sites such as Fundy Key and Long War. Staff are recommending approval of the rezoning in Section 59 conditions to approve the first phase in its entirety, including height, massing, and materials. Additional approval to the overall height and massing of the future phases of the project is also recommended. This provides the developer with a degree of certainty regarding approval of the overall concept, and also provides for the future phases to come back before the city and common council for approval with respect to elements such as interior design, including building materials, windows, cladding, landscaping, and the detailed design of how the development interfaces with the adjacent public realm along Harbor Passage and redesigned Loyola Plaza. This future design would also include any future headway connection between Market Square and the proposed development. Staff are also recommending a zoning bylaw amendment to the height map to increase the height from 28 to 42 meters, as it currently stands on the development site, to 70 meters for the northeast building, 60 meters for the southeast and southwest buildings, and 25 meters for the southwest building. The proponent completed a shadow and wind analysis. The wind study found that the proposed development would increase, would actually decrease, rather, wind levels located at the water's edge of the development site. It would also eliminate existing wind tunnel issues at the base of Main Street and along Chipman Hill, and will create incremental wind increases at Water Street, the waterfront portion of Loyola Plaza, and other areas in the development. Staff have recommended that the building's design incorporate mitigative measures for any increase in conditions. The shadow study reviewed shadows cast onto adjacent public spaces, including Water Street, Harbor Passage, and Loyola Plaza. The largest impacts occur on December 21st, which impacts Loyola Plaza and Water Street. Design of the redevelopment of Loyola Plaza and Market Square is progressing, and it is expected that lighting will be retained to provide for this space to be used during the nighttime hours of the winter months to accommodate low light levels associated with shadow conditions. The proposed approach to the height and massing seeks to limit the impacts of shadows on the adjacent Loyola Plaza and Market Slip areas, especially during the summer months when there are higher levels pedestrian active in these areas. To minimize the shadow impacts, the tower floor plates have been kept small, and the overall massing of the buildings has and the overall massing of the buildings has been terraced from the northeast of the site to the southwest. The design of the podium of the northwest building also includes a clipping or a chaffmer of the northwest corner of the podium, which provides a visual connection between Market Strip and the proposed cultural building, but also maximizing the evening sun exposure to the Market Square patio. The three towers are offset to the eastern edge of their podiums to further minimize shading in the Market Square Plaza to the north of the site and to also concentrate the massing close to the adjacent development areas currently found in the Uptown. With respect to section fifty-nine amendment, staff are recommending that past section fifty-nine conditions be rescinded. These relate to the initial proposal brought forth by the St. John Development Corporation and the twenty-nineteen proposal that provided for an interim parking area and interim uses of the site while the Fundy Key development was being designed. In terms of engagement, an open house was held in conjunction with the Loyola Plaza development on September twenty-seventh as part of our internal community planning engagement process. Letters were mailed to all property owners within a hundred meters of the site in early December, and a public notice for the public hearing that is held tonight was posted on our website on December fifteenth. As of December thirteenth, we received two emails. One was in support and one specifically raised concerns with respect to the proposed roadway. We also note that the city's Economic Development Agency, Develop St. John, conducted extensive consultation with various stakeholders in the community on this project as well. Staff's recommendation was to rezone the site to waterfront commercial development, integrated development, and rescind the existing fifty-nine conditions. Staff are proposing a suite of section fifty-nine conditions that would limit development to the current proposal, provide for phase one with future phases subject to further section fifty-nine amendments, basically give approval to the height and massing of the current proposal, provide for a range of land uses as requested by the development, require mitigative measures as recommended in the study. PAC's recommendation again was to rezone the site, rescind the existing section fifty-nine conditions, and impose new conditions as recommended in staff. Staff are also recommending that the height schedule be amended, and the committee also granted the necessary step after.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you for rendering down, I think it was a hundred and thirty pages almost in our kit down to the, that nutshell for us. It's good information. So I will open the public hearing, and I'll ask if there is anyone here this evening who would like to speak against this proposal, this application, sorry. Is there anyone here that would like to speak against the application? I'll ask for the third time if there's anyone here who would like to speak against the application. I will say that we did not have anyone registered to speak against the application. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the application? We do have three people registered that may speak in favor of the application, so I'll... Okay, I have someone, I have Chris Elias. Chris, welcome, and over to you.
Thank you, your worship and council. And also thank you, Mark, for that very thorough presentation. I won't get into too many details and rehash what Mark has already provided in terms of overview of the first building and the master plan that was presented this evening. But I will give a little bit of an update as to how things have been progressing on our end and since our approvals from planning. And we have been continuing to work through our design process with our architects and our consultants and starting to get into some more detailed design of the first building. And as of right now, our timeline in conjunction with the, with the city's infrastructure timeline is we're anticipating, or at least the goal is to get in the ground this coming summer, twenty-twenty-two. So we're very excited about that. And I, yeah, I think Mark and planning staff really summed everything up very well. So thank you, Mark, and the entire planning team and infrastructure as well. Both planning and infrastructure have been extremely generous with their time as we've worked through this process. So I'd like to thank both those departments. And if there's any questions, be glad to field those. Or if there's any technical questions, we've got our architects here on the call as well. Thank you.
Excellent. I do have a couple of questions here. Counselor Harris?
I'm sure to Chris. Chris, thank you so much for your involvement in this project. It's truly an inspiring project for the city, and I think, you know, we're sitting in a place where we're learning a lot of lessons from other cities who have ruined their waterfront. And this is a gorgeous project that is going to build in a lot of public and common use and connectivity and just a lot of value for, for citizens across the city. So that's, that's, to me, that's, it's just an amazing project on many fronts. I do wonder, how have, have, have you had, I guess, there's a line of questions I would have depending on this first, first answer to this first question, which is, have you had any conversations with Housing NB on any sorts of overall grand scheme of type of use for these residential units? There's six hundred some odd units in this, which is amazing density to add to our city. I'm always asking question on who are we trying to bring and who are we building for? We could add a thousand units every year and be building for the wrong people, and that's just sort of the information I try to track along with. So in your opinion, I guess on that NB Housing piece, I know that they do a lot of subsidized housing. They do a lot of accessibility grants. That would be my question, is have you guys been talking to Housing NB on that front, and what about?
Mr. Elias, if you can give us a bit of a nutshell, like we're, we've been, as you well know, asked tonight to rezone this. So I like, that's a sort of another conversation, but you know, if you have some information on that, we'd certainly be interested in hearing it.
Yeah, no, we have been, we've worked with NB Housing on a, on a lot of other projects, and we're very, you know, comfortable in that area. And it's, we've got about a hundred and thirty units currently with NB Housing. And we have been exploring possibilities for further partnerships on this site. And we've also been looking at alternative programs as well that support, whether it not be directly subsidized housing through NB Housing, also other affordability-related schemes that allow for affordable but not necessarily subsidized units as well. So we're exploring really all the options in our, in our financial models at this point.
And are you at the place where we, we have an understanding, you know, what the kind of percentage will be for accessibility in this? Because, you know, long-term, there's going to be a tie into the roadway system. And to me, that's just a huge value proposition for our city for accessibility reasons. And there's going to be a big stack of units here in your building. So do we have any sense on what the target is for accessibility units?
Yeah, we, I will qualify this by saying our unit, our exact unit counts and layouts are still being refined with our architectural team. As of right now, or as of the latest count in this first building, we were currently targeting forty-four accessible units of a hundred and eighteen. And that was for this southeast building alone. So that, that's obviously subject to change as we continue to refine that design, but that, that was the most recent target.
It's an ambitious number. That's definitely more than what's the minimum is. So all we can do is applaud you for that, because that's, that's something that, you know, for our city, we need to be thinking about and, and getting good news about. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Counselor. I have the deputy up next, please.
Thank you, your worship. Chris, I want to applaud you on this project. It's been a long time coming and finally seeing some light at the end of the tunnel with your, with your group taking hold of it. You wanted to get started in twenty-twenty-two. Any idea when the first building would be completed? What, what you'd like to see completed?
Our, our schedules right now are, you know, still being refined as well as we continue to advance design. But the target would be a twenty-four to thirty-month building cycle for the first building.
Okay, okay. So we're looking at twenty-twenty-four possibly.
Yeah.
To see the first building up and running. Excellent news. I really appreciate the, the project and all the hard work going into it. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Redwine?
Thank you. May I read through to Mr. Elias? First of all, it's such an exciting project. Congratulations on, and I hope that you're very successful with it all. I just had a couple of questions, and I was just wondering when it comes to, finally, when it, when the project is completed, the safety around the parking garages. Just wondering if you have any insight as to, you know, how to make sure that it doesn't feel like it's, sometimes it's about the impression, it could give the impression that it might be unsafe, but I'm sure that you have plans for that.
Yeah, there, there was a comment in the third-party review about making sure that as we move through the design, that mine was given to assuring that the parking garage and the parking lot in the center of the site had adequate view lines and adequate lighting and other measures that make, make sure everyone on the pedestrian level feels safe, which is obviously something we're going to keep in mind as we continue to work through design. I will say that there is, you know, there's, we feel that that, that site specifically will have the majority of foot traffic, really, if you look at Water Street now, it will probably be more so on the Harbor Passage side than on the actual Water Street sidewalk. So we made the site very open to Harbor Passage and very open to the public space surrounding it. So even though the comments specifically said that there, there may have been potential for not a lot of eyes from Water Street, we feel that this, the site's very open to the perimeter of the site and public space. And we've also, there is, you know, there's, there's common use and animated ground floor uses along that interior as well. It's not just parking. There, there will be, you know, retail areas and storefrontages and a lot of things that will provide some activity to make sure that any chance of it being perceived as having potential safety concerns would be mitigated.
Yeah, I, I think that's fair. I mean, people are drawn to the water for sure. And when I first looked at the, the out, like just the plan itself, I thought that there was four entryways, but there's only two. Is that right?
Entryways from Water Street for, for cars?
Like in, yeah, yeah, well, of course, you know, it's not really going to probably matter when it comes to this one building, but finally when the four are completed there in the middle, so entryway. So I, I was kind of thinking of emergency vehicles, but it looks like there's ample enough room for them to get in and out and two ways, one way from, I guess it would probably be what, the east side and one from the west side.
Yes, they, they, you know, our, our team, our civil team has made sure that all the clearance bars for emergency vehicles were adequate for all of the turning radiuses and for entry and exit into the site. So all those buildings will be served by, yeah, emergency vehicles.
Yeah, wonderful. Project looks great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hickey?
Thank you, your worship. Thanks very much, Chris. I think based on all your answers so far, I'm only increasing in my excitement for what's in store for Fundy Key. I think it's a, it's truly going to be the catalytic transformational project that we all hoped it would. I've got a question for you related to the community cultural building that's listed on your proposal. Any hints for us? Any, any idea at all? Is there any indication, like, are we getting a museum there?
I, we've gone a year mark at the time, and we're, we're definitely going to explore every possibility for community and cultural uses that we, that we can. You know, it's, it's a bit of a live issue at the time. We're still trying to work through exactly what that could be. And as you saw probably from the, from the phasing in the plan, it's probably going to end up being one of the later buildings in the development. So we're definitely working through that, and we're open to explore, you know, what all sorts of opportunities for cultural space and community space for that, for that building.
That's excellent. And maintaining it as such too, even in your plans is without, without government's commitment is, is important. So I, you know, obviously not our level of government, but I apologize on behalf of all governments for lagging on a plan with that. And, you know, would encourage members around this table to make sure we're pushing our provincial government to come up with a plan for such an important building like that. And a side note, we have a museum with our home, so I'll leave it there. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor. Okay, any other questions? All right, Mr. Elias, that's great. I will ask for the next, thank you for your time. I will ask for the next person. If there's anyone else here who is going to speak in favor of the project? Is there anyone else who will, is going to speak, would like to speak in favor of this project for the third time? Okay, I guess that is it for the public hearing. I will close the public hearing, and I'll ask council if anyone has any questions or staff in regards to this project. So I am going to require, where am I here? Going to require two motions.
You got a couple of questions?
Counselor Redwine, I see that you have a question. Oh, and Counselor, guilty. So we'll start with Counselor Redwine.
That's okay. I was just wondering why section M in the PAC's recommendations was not included.
Mr. Reed, are you going to take that one?
Yes, your worship. Just bear with me here, and I'll fill that up on my screen.
Okay, M being the, through you to the counselor, the municipal infrastructure improvements?
Yeah.
That's in the, the PAC's recommendation letter.
Okay.
If it is in, and that's a fairly standard condition that we have that, you know, requires that if there's any upgrades to off-site infrastructure, that that be needed by the developer. And that is in, it's in the PAC recommendation letter, but it isn't in the recommended section fifty-nine conditions. It didn't make its way into that. It looks like those were truncated, but it will be in the package for third reading next week for those.
Okay. No, that's great. And I just, Mayor, if I could, I'd just like to thank the developer and staff have obviously done a lot of work on this. And a special thank you as well to the Public Advisory Committee, who I'm sure spent quite a bit of time on this project too. It is catalytic project. And, you know, I just want to take this time and say thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hickey? Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hickey, do you have a question for staff?
I do, and certainly want to thank staff for the huge amount of work on this. Thanks very much, Mark. It all looks great. I do have one question, though, that I'm confused about, and of course, I've screwed up what page I was on. Mark, part of part of this rezoning is from uptown commercial to like waterfront commercial, integrated development or something like that. Can you clarify exactly what that is? Because I'm I'm just, I'm a little confused about what the actual, like, what what the like, what the definition behind those zonings are.
Sure, your worship, through you to the counselor, the these waterfront commercial integrated development zone that we're going to. It's a couple of things. It's a bit of a hybrid in that waterfront commercial, so it's on the waterfront. It's an area where we want to have commercial development. And it's also what we call an integrated development zone. So what that is, it's typically, you know, certain, like, if you went down to Halifax or certain areas, they call them comprehensive development districts, where a lot of the standards for the zone are laid out through section 59 conditions, essentially. It's typically not not a standard zone where you'd have a list of permitted uses and then a list of standards that says, you know, the lot area must be 460 meters, the front yard setbacks must be three, the rear yard setbacks must be six. It's it's kind of almost a one off or one where we tailor the conditions imposed on the zoning to recognize a certain development proposal. And it's typically applied on, you know, higher profile sites of this on a waterfront or, you know, those key catalytic zones.
Mark, does that pull them out of the intended commitments to the BIA?
Uh, no, that would be, the BIA would be a separate bylaw. They would still be, you know, that if it's still within, if it's within the BIA bylaw, it doesn't pull them out, like, this doesn't trump business improvement areas by law.
Okay, so so that, like, I'm just putting my hat on as a rep at the at Uptown St. John. So this wouldn't pull that area out of, out of being part of the BIA. I don't think the whole Coast Guard side is part of the BIA, but I know a good chunk of it is. I don't know if this whole project would be or not.
And Jacqueline may be able to provide some more insight on that.
Yeah, there's no, absolutely no impact on the BIA. This is purely about about zoning, land use and zoning, so it would not impact that at all.
Okay, great. Thanks to you both and thanks for the huge heavy lifting here. It's a, it's it's gonna be pretty exciting to see this happen.
Okay. Team, I need two motions for this one. City Clerk, I'll get you to call the first motion.
Your worship, yes, the first motion is the zoning bylaw reading by title.
Reading by title. Everybody here. Okay, I'll take Counselor Killen and Counselor Hickey. It's your ward. On the question? All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. And the second?
Law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
I'm just anxious. Second motion, City Clerk.
Again, another motion to approve first reading by, or second reading by title.
Second reading by title. Counselor Harrison, Counselor Low, that's your ward, too. On the question? All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
To amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Thank you, City Clerk. I do also want to thank staff. I know there was a lot of heavy lifting. It was 130 pages in the kit, and that's condensed. And Mr. Elias, I've heard it said that St. John is what St. John builds. And if this is the case, we are exciting, we are strategic, we are on the move. This is a great project and it's a fantastic piece of land, and it's been waiting for you because it's been, there's been a couple of attempts that just haven't come to fruition. So I think it was just in the cards for the Elias Group to to take it over. So congratulations and thank you very much. Okay. City Clerk, next item.
Your worship, this is the third in our public hearings, item 9.3. It is a bylaw to respecting the closing of roads, streets and highways for Jack Street. The general counsel will provide a brief overview.
Melanie Tompkins, over to you, please.
Thank you, your worship. Before council for public hearing this evening is a proposed amendment to the street closing bylaw with respect to a 128 square meter portion of Jack Street. Mr. Curtis Langel, real estate manager, will provide a brief overview of the proposed amendment and the reasoning behind saying.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis Langel. Over to you.
Thank you, your worship, members of council. I I hate to correct my boss, but I'm gonna have to. The 128 square meters, that was amended to become 137 at a more recent meeting of council. That being said, I hope I have a job tomorrow. This is a public hearing for the consideration of a stop up enclosure of a very small portion of what is called Jack Street. Jack Street is a small collector or sort of small local road off of Sandy Point Road near to Rockwood Park. At the end of this road is a number of multi-unit residential buildings. And in this particular case, the owners of a 24 unit building at the end of Jack Street are requesting to stop up and close a small portion of of the street right of way. This right of way is is undeveloped, it's landscaped, and the intent would be at some point in time for this to be turned into a cul-de-sac. All of these properties in on Jack Street have been fairly fully developed. It's a mature neighborhood. I don't, I don't expect any, any, any change will occur to Jack Street in the near future. Our Department of Public Works and Transportation have given the okay for this small portion to be stopped up and closed. We, Real Estate Services had reached an agreement on a purchase price for this small portion of land if it is closed. And the purpose of the closure, I guess I should mention, it was realized during renovations that a small portion of the building, in fact, encroaches into the street right of way. But the real, the real intent here was to provide additional land space for some balconies that were under construction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Langel. Okay, I will open the public hearing and I'll ask if there is anyone here that would like to speak against this application. Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this application? I'll ask for the third time if there's anyone here who would like to speak against this application. I will note that we have no one registered to speak against the application. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the application? Anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the application? I'll ask for the third time if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the application. I will also note that there was no one registered to speak in favor of the application. So I will close the public hearing and I will ask counsel if you have any questions for Mr. Curtis or Ms. Tompkins in regards to this issue. And if not, I will ask, I'm gonna need two motions. I will ask the City Clerk to bring forward the first motion.
Your worship, first motion required is a reading by title of the bylaw.
Reading by title, Counselor Harris and the deputy on the question, on the question? All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried.
A bylaw respecting the closing of roads, streets or highways in the city of St. John.
Next motion, City Clerk.
Next motion is for a bylaw reading by title.
Bylaw reading by title. Counselor Sullivan and Counselor Redmond on the question? All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried.
A bylaw respecting the closing of roads, streets or highways in the city of St. John.
Thank you, City Clerk. This is, was a nice one because it was nice to see that this building is being renovated and that they will be including balconies with the outdoor space for people, especially in these days with COVID locking us down. Next item, City Clerk.
Your worship, we had another item under consideration of bylaws that wasn't addressed, and that's item 10.4. This is for a bylaw respecting the procedures of common council. And the general counsel will give a brief introduction of the bylaw before you.
Okay, over to you, Ms. Tompkins.
Thank you, your worship, and I assure you, Mr. Curtis's job is not at risk. I want to assure the public of that. And thank you, Curtis, for correcting my mistake. Before council for third reading this evening is an amendment to the procedural bylaw, which is intended to clarify the manner in which the public may write to this council and how those communications will be treated when they are received by the City Clerk. The proposed amendment clarifies what is deemed to be inappropriate communications and will therefore not be placed on a council agenda. It also provides discretion to the city manager to determine which communications will be referred directly to staff for action. The proposed amendment ensures that members of this council are notified of every communication received by the clerk, which is not placed on a council agenda. The proposed amendment received first and second reading on December 13th, 2021. I will hand it back to the clerk, your worship, for the appropriate motions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your worship, this particular item is rather lengthy. So there is a provision which we've taken advantage of within the legislation that allows us to read it in summary rather than read the whole thing. So the first motion we'd be looking for is approval of reading by summary.
So third reading by summary. Deputy and Counselor, and Counselor Stewart? On the question? All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried.
A bylaw respecting the procedures of common council of the city of St. John. The city's procedural bylaw will be bolstered by amending section 10.3, Communications from the Public. The proposed amendment clarifies what is deemed to be inappropriate communications, example, depamatory language, offensive language or subject matter, and provides discretion to the city manager to determine which communications can be referred directly to the city manager for follow up action. The amendment also ensures that members of council are notified of any communication received and not placed on the agenda. And your worship, another motion for third reading by title is required.
Third reading by title. I need a motion for third reading by title. Counselor Norton and Counselor Hickey on the question? All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you.
A bylaw respecting the procedures of common council of the city of St. John.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. Next item.
Your worship, next we have submission by Counselor Hickey, item 11.1, National Urban Parks.
Over to you, Counselor Hickey, to read your motion. And if we get a second or you can, well, we'll talk about it.
Thank you, your worship. I'm excited to introduce this one. Despite what, you know, the friend of the TJ kind of making me look like a sex offender this morning, I was talking about Rockwood Park and the opportunity that exists for it. Part of, I'm just gonna pull it up here, part of the federal Minister of the Environment's new mandate letter from the Prime Minister includes the addition of 15 national urban parks across the country, one in each province, and then obviously a couple extras. This was liked to me by a few members of the community, and I want to thank them for that, as well as members of the St. John Horticultural Association. One really did come from the community, this intention. And and really, really, all it is, I hope, is an offering to our staff to enable them to offer support, to to offer our support to our staff to say, let's try and go after this. Let's try and get ahead of this because we have the perfect candidate in our city, which I feel is Rockwood Park. And and certainly, I think, you know, offers some flexibility based on what the context of the RFP ends up being from the federal government in regard to these national urban parks, as to whether or not, you know, it's a preexisting park or whatever it is. But I truly think Rockwood Park is the perfect candidate, you know, 220, 2,200 acres of of parkland right in the heart of our city. Huge trails, lots of, lots of beauty in it. We all know that. And if if I get a second or I'll read the motion and perhaps we can have a conversation about it.
I'll second the motion. Counselor Hickey. Do you want to read your motion so that Counselor Killen can second it?
Absolutely. But again, I, oh, here we go. Jeez, you think I was just new to this tech stuff? I'm not. My motion is resolved that common council authorized staff to take the necessary steps to ensure that Rockwood Park becomes poised to be identified as one of Canada's new urban parks, new national urban parks.
Thank you. And Counselor Killen's gonna second that for you. We have some questions for you, Counselor Hickey, and up first is Counselor Sullivan.
Not a question, your worship, just, just thank you to Counselor Hickey for bringing this forward. I knew nothing about it until I read his motion and really, Rockwood Park should be on the picture on the front of the brochure for this whole program. So well done, Counselor Hickey. It'll have my full support.
Agreed. Thank you. Counselor Harris.
Thank you, your worship. I would just like to add on to this motion with a friendly amendment. Fully supportive of this, Counselor Hickey, you and I chatted a little bit about this motion in advance. It's a great find. It's, it's always good to be on the cutting edge of some of this. I think the only thing I would love to see added is to give staff a little bit more latitude to be able to pursue other options based, as you said, Counselor Hickey, on that RFP. If there are existing parks and they can't be re-designated because of an existing park, and they must be new parks under this RFP. There's already one I've already looked at. I had some fun on Google Maps just looking through. And then, of course, my development brain started turning, turning on its wheels and I I kind of found this plot of land that I've been eyeballing for years in the north end where the old forum is. It's owned by the Ervings. It's, it's for sale right now. It's near Clarendon Street. But there's this, like, wilderness area swath that shoots down the coastline. It goes up behind all the buildings on Douglas Avenue. And then it can wrap around behind where the the boat launch area is in the north end. And there's another little wilderness spot over there where there's a little island and things. Anyway, there's some really interesting places like that one. That one's three and a half kilo, square kilometers. So I'd love to be able to give staff as much latitude, as I said, to say, look, there's a development opportunity for a park, because if Rockwood doesn't work, this one could work. And it might drive some development in an area of the city where we need development driven. So common clerk, however you would want to write that, I guess the amendment would be just to add on. Should Counselor Hickey be inviting him this, add on to that, to pursue other flexible options for an urban park placement in the city of St. John?
Counselor Hickey?
Yeah, I I'm comfortable with that, your worship. I mean, the the thing with this is, is it's, you know, two lines listed in a federal minister's mandate letter. So the the trouble is, we don't know what the RFP will look like. We don't know when the RFP would happen, which, you know, it struggles with any, any kind of work from staff. But really, all this is, is an intention to say, hey, let's be the place in New Brunswick that has a national urban park.
Sounds good. Counselor Ogden, did you have a question for Counselor Hickey?
No, I just wanted to say, well done, Counselor Hickey.
Thank you. Agreed. All right, so we have a mover and a seconder on this, and we have the amendment that we can look at.
Worship, I noticed the city manager went off mute.
Do you have your?
Yeah, your worship, if I may, just, just to keep it clean, I I understand Counselor Harris's sentiment, absolutely. Just, just to make the point, as a city staff, our commitment would be, as soon as we see that there's a roadblock to Rockwood Park, we would be returning to council suggesting an alternative approach in any event. So motions on the fly are always difficult to get the wording exactly right for the sake of the minutes. I would simply say that the motion as written probably gives us our initial marching orders with an understanding we're coming back as soon as we hit a roadblock. Otherwise, we do need exact clarity as to what the additional wording to the motion would be.
Okay, well, that makes, that makes sense. That makes sense that you'll be coming back. Sure.
Yeah, I'll retract that then, your worship. Thank you. Yeah, I'll retract that then, your worship, thank you.
And that's kind of why I left it anyway, Brent, was just, I think, like, staff knows that we are intending to do something on this, they understand the flexibility here, so.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so on the question? All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. Wonderful. Okay, City Clerk, next item.
Your worship, there's one other submission from a council member, it's eleven point two on your agenda, and it's a submission from councillor Ogden, Growth Path to Increase Student Population.
Councillor Ogden, over to you to introduce your motion and read it for us.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, we want St. John to grow, we want it to become better educated, lower poverty rates, and we want a younger population that can help us with our older population because we have an aging demographic. If you look around Atlantic Canada, from Sydney, Charlottetown, Moncton, Fredericton, Halifax, et cetera, the averages of university students range from approximately six thousand to thirty-two thousand. Here in St. John, we have two thousand students. And we know with our struggles with the province over tax discussions that for fifty-six years, we've paid the most in taxes, we have the highest taxes, our property owners pay too high a taxes, and yet, post-secondary education, the lion's share comes from taxes, so that means St. John has got to get a greater share. And so, when you look at our population, if we could put another eight to ten thousand people in here who are younger, will become better educated, et cetera, then we would have a city that would grow. Just to give you the example, is we built the medical school because we found out that doctors who were moving away to get their medical degrees were staying away, and the, one of the ideas behinding the medical school was, how can we keep our doctors here? And we should educate them here. So with that, I have this motion. The common council directs the growth committee and envision St. John to build a growth plan to dramatically increase our post-secondary student population, which will raise St. John's education levels and lower our poverty levels.
Excellent, can I get a seconder on that? Councillor Sullivan? And does anyone have any questions for councillor Ogden? On his, councillor Harris?
No questions, I guess I have a question for staff and then a comment, if that's okay, your worship.
Sure, go ahead.
Question for staff is, just trying to understand, are we enabled with our current, I forget what the agreement's called, with Envision, are we enabled to direct them to do anything? I just want to make sure that we get councillor Ogden's wording right on this motion so that it is able to do the work it's supposed to do. I just thought we weren't allowed, I didn't think we were enabled to kind of direct Envision. Maybe it's, maybe it's a word like suggest to engage stakeholders like Envision S J in that process, but maybe city manager has a comment there?
Yes.
Yeah, your worship, through you, through you to the councillor. You are correct, in the strictest definition of the term, there is no provision whereby this council can direct Envision to do a specific project. I'm still nonetheless comfortable with the motion and the intent behind the motion. Could it be a different word? Sure, but I, the, the notion is, we will work with Envision St. John, and by the way, Envision St. John is already there, they recognize the importance of post-secondary education. So, better wording may perhaps be work closely with Envision St. John as opposed to direct Envision St. John, because you are correct, from a purist's point of view, we, we do not have the tool to direct Envision St. John to take this on. But again, I, I'm not too worried about the precise wording in this particular case.
Wouldn't be the first time I've been referred to as a purist, so I'll take that with, with a grain of salt, city manager, thank you. My, my comment to it is, is very, I think it's, I think it's very important, as you bring up, that we have this additional groundswell of students in St. John, and certainly, I mean, as a graduate from Mount, Mount Allison, there's a little tiny town with a student population of around fifty-four hundred people, right? So, it's, it's a growing need, we know that it's a competitive environment for this intellectual economy, if you call it that. But my thought is that, you know, are we, can we give staff as much latitude, again, kind of similar to Hickey's comment, because councillor Ogden, when you called me, I just began to think things over, and although I'm absolutely favorable of it, I want to make sure that staff have an opportunity to pursue kind of innovative ways, because right now, online learning has been incredibly proliferated. You can basically take the lion's share of university and college offerings from anywhere in the world, but what you can't get, sitting in your, in your parents' basement, back wherever you grew up, is that university-college social experience. And I have never seen a city that's trying to compete for this neutral ground of, hey, you may want to study at the University of Michigan, or you may want to study at U of T, you can take those courses online, but would you move to St. John to take them? Is there, is there a digital learning commons that we have here in the city? Anyway, I know it's a little bit of an innovative idea that we've never gone down the road of, but I would love for staff to consider all those opportunities to grow the student population outside of UNB, outside of NBCC, as important as those institutions are. We're seeing the, we're seeing Glenn Hicks and his group at U Station in partnership with the Chamber do exactly that with remote, working remotely through their Workation program, which I think is a tremendous success for our city. An amazing little initiative that, that I think others have picked up on, so it could be repeated with students, and there's a lot of empty vacant office buildings that probably could be co-learning centers if we, if we think about them. So, anyway, I just throw that on the table for staff to consider, supportive of the motion, definitely want to see our population, student population grow.
I think councillor, with that going to the growth committee too, will have an opportunity to maybe put flesh on that skeleton, so. So that's all good. I've got councillor Killen up next.
Thank you, your worship. Yes, shares the growth committee, I just wanted to chime in here on this piece. And also a proud graduate of U N B S J. So, I chose to go here, and I chose to stay here and go to school here, so I very much support the idea that that is a thing to be proliferated, that we can be supportive to these institutions while also thinking outside the box. So I totally support this, and I look forward for the discussion at the growth committee level so that we can kind of figure out how to build a foundation and a culture of learning and all that kind of stuff as we evolve through this next phase of sort of change in education. Because I don't think necessarily that we have to stay in one lane when it comes to this, I think it's, it's very exciting to think about the possibility, so thank you to councillor Ogden for bringing this forward.
Councillor Redwin.
Thank you, Mayor Rudin, through you, I just wanted to also say thank you to councillor Ogden, I, I always appreciate your passion when it comes to trying to grow our student population. And it got me thinking, you know, about like, how strong are our growth plans, and, you know, obviously, you know, deputy Mackenzie talked about how many buildings were built, we need to keep that momentum growing, and, and I think that this could be a great way to do it, and we have tons of geographical space, so let's just keep filling it.
All right, so that's it for questions, councillor, oh, wait now, councillor Mackenzie, did you have a question or a comment?
No, just a comment, your worship, I certainly agree with the intent of councillor Ogden's motion, and I, and I recognize that Envision's already doing that in their presentation. So I'll be supportive of this, it's really, it's a, it's a referral to the growth committee to work with Envision, I guess, is at the end of the day, what we're looking for here, so I'll be supportive of it, thank you.
Okay, so we have the motions on the floor, and we have a seconder, and on the question? All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you. City Clerk, next item.
Your worship, we have a presentation that's scheduled, it's item eight point one on your agenda, and the presentation is by Envision St. John, entitled The Regional Growth Agency: Presentation on KPIs. The city manager will give a brief.
Your worship, members of council, with us this evening is the Chief Executive Officer of Envision St. John, the Regional Growth Agency, Ms. Paulette Hicks. You, you know the background of the creation of the agency, et cetera, I will say that presenting this evening is an ironic twist of the calendar in that the organization is one year old this month. So it is a great time to have her back before council. Within the Members Agreement, which was one of the main documents agreed to by all of the regional councils last year, there was two requirements for Envision St. John to set, well, there are many requirements, but two particular requirements that Envision St. John had to satisfy on behalf of the regional councils. The first was that Envision St. John needed to produce a strategic plan that was approved by the members. That occurred last fall, and this council was briefed on that strategic plan. The second requirement was to develop and have approved by the members the key performance indicators, if you will, the base of the performance measurements architecture that Envision St. John would use moving forward. The members and the Board of Directors of Envision St. John approved those KPIs just prior to Christmas to satisfy that remit. The CEO is here this evening as part of the communications plan for those KPIs to explain to this council what is that base of the performance measurement system that they will be using, and without further ado, I would like to hand it over to Ms. Paulette Hicks.
Welcome, Paulette Hicks, nice to have you here.
Thank you, your worship, Happy New Year, everyone, hello to the councillors, thank you, John, for giving that background. It is a pleasure to be here tonight, so I thank you again for this opportunity. This presentation night is specific to, as John had indicated, our key performance indicator, indicators which dovetail into the strategic vision and the tenure outcomes that we have identified for regional growth. So I will share my screen quickly here, just to make sure that I can bring everything up and everybody can see. So I've got a slide deck that I'll go through. And can everyone see my screen?
We've got it, yes.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, so defining success, so tonight really is about how is the agency in the region going to define our success? It has been a big year, a heavy lift, a lot of volunteers, in particular from the board. Certainly, your city manager, highly active at the table, standing up the organization, really focused on outcomes, accountability, and I'm really pleased tonight to be here to walk through, again, another milestone that we're happy to have achieved. So, who we are, Envision St. John, the Regional Growth Agency, you know, we are the region's sales, marketing, and support engine, strategically focused on attracting people, visitors, business, and investments. And while we're the engine, we recognize that we are part of an ecosystem, and others are doing a lot of this heavy work, but clearly, you know, our role is, how do we identify the priorities, bring the right people to the table, and really focus on moving the needle? Defining our success, so we're very clear in our strategic vision, what we're trying to achieve, so just to remind everyone collectively, what we're trying to do with tenure outcomes, grow our population by twenty-five thousand, increase municipal property tax base by thirty to thirty-five percent, sorry, and continue to build our brand. We want a stronger place brand, and this really is something that's important to us as it relates to positioning our region for growth. How we do it, so the, Envision St. John, the Regional Growth Agency, is accelerating regional growth by connecting innovators, entrepreneurs, and builders to get stuff done now. So, really, the role of the agency, again, is to bring the right people to the table and to focus on our priorities and what are our natural assets, how do we lean into this? And how do we underpin, partner, and align with our priorities from a growth perspective? We identified strategic priorities within our strategic vision, we are committed to them in as way the agency is structured. So the growth readiness piece, how well are we ready to anticipate and prepare for the growth? So this is a two-way relationship with all of our municipal investors, and our commitment to be good stewards of the information and the data that we have, to make sure that we're, you know, understanding where the opportunities are as it relates to talent in building that talent strategy and acquisition and pipeline, looking at housing and development, how we feed that back to make sure that our developers are fully aware of what the opportunities are to make the right investments, and certainly from a healthcare perspective, you know, certainly it's important for us to understand, can we meet the needs of folks that are moving here and the amenities that they need, we need to tick all those boxes. Talent acquisition, you know, great discussion with councillor Ogden, and putting that proposal on the table, you know, clearly, the agency in the first year, it is loud and clear that our biggest barrier to growth is talent, so attracting students is critical to our region at every level, whether that's post-secondary through U N B S J, whether that's the community college, whether that is working directly with Anglophone and Francophone South, you know, working with our kids in our priority neighborhoods to make sure that we've got a path to education as it relates to, you know, growing that talent pipeline and retention. And focusing on our entrepreneurs and business growth, without doubt, we continue to want to support our startups, our scale-ups, looking at what our businesses need to be successful. I'd like to take you through just a couple of examples, you know, through the document that was shared in the package, defining success, you know, we're helping to create the conditions for growth, and we're using a new model, which is a platform model, and really, platforms are opportunities. What are the opportunities in, in our region that can help accelerate growth? And really, always pointing to the North Star, those tenure outcomes, you know, everything we do in the agency with our partners collectively is, will this move the needle? More people, growing the property tax revenue, and building on a strong place brand. So looking at short-term and midterm outcomes, partnering with U N B S J, and specifically the MBA program, we've had a strong MBA program in our region, but we are looking to really focus in and build a stronger strategy. Looking at a targeted recruitment, are we bringing the right MBAs to the table that are going to fill all the jobs? It's great to grow MBAs, but if they graduate and leave, it's not moving the needle we need to grow our population, so how do we make sure that we're attracting the MBAs that our companies and our hometowns and our global headquarters and our smaller businesses need? So increasing that student enrollment, you know, working with our employers to understand, to help harmonize the connection of those enrollments, and really, the retention of, how do we keep them here? We bring them here, as councillor Harris has indicated, how do we keep them here? For our home team and our homegrown youth that live here, how do we keep them here? Similar to councillor Killen, she went to school here, now she's here, she runs her own business, she obviously serves publicly, so it's a great example of a retention strategy that is robust. So certainly, from a platform perspective, we see this as a huge opportunity, as well as how we retain our newcomers. Another example, and this is, falls into really developing new product, giving people reasons to visit our region, and obviously, visitation can lead to population growth because they can turn into residents. But we have embarked in the last quarter of twenty twenty-one in launching a new festival and supporting a new festival in our region in St. Martin's, the Fundy Sea Shanty. So this is an example of a sprint platform, a smaller platform, because it is a defined timeline. It does align with our tenure outcomes, bringing more people to our region, which we believe has economic impact. So, again, aligning with the, the tenure outcomes. But looking at the short and midterm outcomes, and we look at development of this particular festival, there is an economic impact, because we know that visitation will increase in our region, in particular in St. Martin's, but we know that people that will be from out of town will actually stay in the city of St. John and visit throughout the region. It is new tourism product, which is important for St. Martin's as it relates to elevating the, the place brand for the region, creating pride in place. But in particular, we have a signature asset in the Fundy Trail, a jewel of a land to Canada, so how do we continue to activate that product? Again, it elevates the whole region. We did partner with one of our corporate companies, and actually, of a significant employer at the port, DP World, which is still fairly new to our region, came to our region in two thousand and eighteen, and it was really, how do we enhance their brand? So we looked at this partner with Fundy Sea Shanty to tie in the port and the connection to the city of St. John, and the work that we're doing at the port with respect to the workforce development and the expansion that's happening there. So another example of a sprint platform, but certainly has big impact for our region. The last example that I wanted to share is the opportunity around U N B's Integrated Health Initiative. This is a significant platform, and probably a priority platform, we would say. Probably, when I look at the two biggest opportunities for growth of our natural assets for our region would. for our region would be the Port of St. John and certainly UMBS. And in particular, UMBS embarking on the Integrated Health Initiative is really important as it relates to our 10-year outcomes. This has significant impact in attracting more people, population growth, growing our tax base revenue, and clearly would align with strengthening our place brand. You know, the short and midterm outcomes that we would look at is the talent pipeline. Again, really aligning the work that we do. We recognize that attracting talent to our region, retaining talent through student enrollments, post-secondary is really critical. This certainly is an opportunity that we're preparing for regional growth. It would increase, again, the population. We'd be looking at 500 new students as part of this platform. It also ties into significant economic impact with respect to additional $40 million, both in faculty payroll, researchers that would be bringing into into UMBSJ and into our region, and again, students. With this particular initiative, it does mean another $2.9 million in research funding, which is almost double that we certainly have going into the university right now. And yet to be defined, because this is a new platform, again, bringing the right people around the table, engaging the ecosystem. We're starting to define what does the private sector investments and spinoffs look like? What are the entrepreneurs? You know, what does, where are the opportunities in business that can come from an Integrated Health Initiative that is launched at UMBSJ in partnership with Horizon Health? Because we are one of the very few campuses that has a hospital on the same campus that really can accelerate this type of opportunity. So with respect to the KPIs, this really, again, is about alignment and evaluation. All the activities for the agency and the resources will always be aligned to the 10-year outcomes. If it doesn't align to the 10-year outcomes, we're not doing the right work, and our commitment is to make sure that we use that lens. The model that we're using is strategic platforms, which are really growth opportunities. And we will continue to evaluate, measure to ensure that we are aligned with the North Star. This does require us to, you know, do criteria review for engagement, making sure it doesn't fit. There's a lens that has to go through to make sure that it makes sense, biannual evaluations, and postmortems. Always looking at, you know, what we've learned, you know, that evaluation piece. The other thing we're committed to is making sure that there is a return on investment for our investors. We take our municipal investors very serious, and obviously, having the CEOs at the tables, at the table, around the board table is certainly important even from an accountability perspective. So we're committed to coming back to councils and to our stakeholders to report quarterly on the impact of the work that we're doing, so that we can clearly see if we're moving the needle. Along with that, we're also committed to the transparency, and we are launching the Regional Growth Dashboard. So this is a collective. It is for everyone. It is the measurement and health of our region. And the first iteration, which is Dashboard 1.0, we've included some of the key metrics that we're focused on, both from an economic and a social perspective, really reflective of the work collaborative that we're doing in the region with all of our partners. But it really is something that, you know, will help guide strategy and certainly one that we know that our stakeholders and others really are looking forward to. It'll be the first regional dashboard of its kind in our region. So with that, I will stop sharing my screen so we can open it up to questions.
Thank you very much, Paulette. It's an impressive. I'm getting a little bit of feedback. It's an impressive presentation. It's not only hopeful, it's strategic. It has great engagement, and it's got some very innovative initiatives in it. I love the Regional Growth Dashboard myself. So I'm going to turn it over to council for a few questions for your comments. So first up, I have Barry Ogden. Councilor Ogden, over to you.
Thank you, Paulette. I just want to point out some things I think that could help this strategy. I don't think that as taxpayers, we should be building residences or that we should be building food halls where international or national food companies come in and then take the money back somewhere else. That's why I think we should be supporting grocery stores, corner stores, our local restaurants with students. I've attended five universities, and I've only spent a little bit of time in a residence, and most people don't. But I think because as taxpayers, we want a return on our investment, that if, I understand the health thing going out to, and science going out to the hospital. But we already have a place that students like to be, and that's in the core of the city. And when I say the core, I mean West St. John, North End, what we usually call Old East End by Bayside Drive, Gene Street, and the South Central Peninsula. I think, because we probably have the nicest in the country, that this is a place that students would like to be. And I don't really want to use our tax dollars, because our tax dollars are too high, and St. John has paid the most in 56 years and has received the least in post-secondary money, is that we should be trying to get courses and students here. UMBS St. John does a good job in business, medicine, the arts, and those are needed. Community College is good with the trades. We probably need more avenues. I'd point out that Moncton has three universities, plus UMBS has put a satellite in there, two community colleges in their metro area. And Fredericton has two universities, plus the Craft School, and now a new community college. So that's where we are, we fall behind, but I think there's things we can do. I think students would love to come up, when Councilor Harris talked about these other avenues. And when you think about all the empty lots in the North End, I've talked to contractors. You look like Percy Wilbur or Keith Brito and these guys, and they have all those upper floors that could be rented out. So why should we take tax dollars and build residences and build how, food halls where the money leaves our city? And I think as taxpayers, if we're going to put money into this plan, and if we okay it, then we're telling the province to go ahead. And remember, the blind share of post-secondary education comes from the provincial dollars, and we are the biggest contributors to that, so we should have a saying. And so I think that if we did that, that that then our whole community, you know, because the the North End, East Side is all in walking distance and everything. And I've met with several universities in major cities when we created the Atlantic Football League, and they all told me they grow downtown, like Concordia grows up. They have a stadium like we do outside, and the people at University of Toronto told me the same thing, and so did Down, so did St. Mary's. So I think we have the right formula. But I think that what we do need to do is drive the students downtown. Could you imagine what, 8,000 to 10,000 students living in around West St. John, the North End, Uptown, off of Bayside Drive would do to this city? It's a younger population, it becomes better educated, it lowers our poverty rate. And here we are, city councilors deciding how, because we're sending messages right now to the other levels of government where we want our money spent. And so I think strategically, we cannot make a mistake here by by not having the right formula here. So I really, I want, I wanted to.
I'm going to get you to wrap it up, if you don't mind. You're hitting your three-minute mark.
Okay, Mayor Riordan, I was going to bring this up before, and the city manager asked me to hold off, so I I have waited a few months.
You have, but you have three minutes according to.
Okay, well, Mayor Riordan, this is, this is really important to St. John, but I'll cut off there.
Thank you, councillor. I will circle back to you.
Thank you.
I'm holding everyone to their three minutes. I have Counselor Harris up next.
Thank you, Your Worship, and good evening, Paulette. Thank you for the presentation. Always good to see you. Just got a kind of a rapid-fire list of questions. You answered a couple of them already around the platforms and the sprint platforms, which now make more sense to me. I would, my only feedback behind using that wordage is I know one of your goals is transparency and accountability to the public. And I I do, and I'm constantly running into this when I'm communicating, when I used to, I guess I don't do as much anymore, communicate with homeowners around, you know, industry jargon. It is something that I have, to the credit of our residents, I've had six residents email me questions about this presentation tonight. People are eager, they're paying attention to what's happening, and I think they're interested, which I think is really good for us. And I think it's good for your organization. People want to see it succeed. But they were all around trying to understand what that platform is. So, but can you give me, you've given a couple of examples, I see there, the healthcare, the cruise ships, the sprint platform, you're talking about a festival, kind of focusing in on that. But in in another part of the presentation or the the document we received tonight, you mentioned that you're trying to get up to six platforms operating within 2022. So are there other platforms that I missed there that you're hoping, and by platforms, my understanding of that is a target area, like an area of the economy that you're focusing on?
So thank you, Councilor Harris. Always great to see you and always appreciate your questions. Great question. Well, I'm glad that people are reaching out because that's a good sign. It's a great sign that people are reading this information, and it matters, and they care, so that's fantastic. I'm glad you asked the question about the platforms, because it is something even within our board and our organization that we've talked about. Platforms in the simplest forms are just opportunities. Some people, you know, can identify them as files, some can even say they're sectors. You know, the platform language is being used globally and even universally in different sectors. Really has come from the IT sector. It was, you know, very, you know, normal nomenclature that they've used. Now, we've identified platforms and the model that are going to work. But in simple terms, and I did this in the slide deck, there really are opportunities. So when I look at, you know, some of our bigger platforms, because I reference in our official document that talks about, again, you know, what we're trying to achieve from a KPIs, those six platforms, those are big growth opportunities. So we're now, again, one year in, we are now, that's the focus of 2022, really identifying what are those opportunities for growth? We're starting to carve them out. You know, I talked about a few examples, the Integrated Health with UMBS, looking at MBA, that whole talent strategy is is a platform. We look at the port modernization and the opportunity at the port, that is a massive platform. I would say the two catalytic growth platforms are opportunities for our region. One is the port, and the other is the university and that talent pipeline and the integrated health, because it has big return. The sprint platforms are somewhat smaller. The example of the Sea Shanty was one. Memorial Cup would be another sprint when we went for that bid. That would be another example. The other big platform would be tourism. Tourism is a really mature platform for our region because we've been in the tourism space for a long time, so that would be another example. A lot of different opportunities come with tourism, whether it's cruise, whether it's meeting conventions, but that's another example. So I think when you look at what we've identified, that is the work we're starting to work through. What are the right opportunities that are going to move the needle? We're using the platform methodology so that we can evaluate, because this is really about evaluation, evaluation, making sure that aligns with the 10-year outcomes, making sure we're engaging with the right people, the ecosystem, bringing the right people together at the table. Because the role of the agency is that we help create the conditions, we help accelerate, we help identify the priorities, and then we bring the right people together to try to get this done and get it over the finish line together as a collective. So that we don't do all the work together, we do it with others. So that would be no different than working with entrepreneurs, which we have embarked on. You know, what is the right innovation play in our in our region to really move the needle for startups and support business? We're forming partnerships by bringing the right people to the table, bringing the experts that are already in this space and how we develop a strategy around supporting entrepreneurs and business growth. Does that help?
It does, it does. It flushes it a lot, and there's just one one final point, because I know I'll be near the end of my time here.
You are past the end of your time, councillor. Is that, can I, do you want, is it short, or do you want me to come back?
I just would say it is short. It would be ideal, I think, if we could articulate an ROI on these opportunities. So, you know, we're measuring the port's tonnage. You know, what is the return on investment for increasing that by 1,000 tons? You know, what does that look like for the taxpayer who's putting in $2.5 million? Because that's the kind of accountability that I would love to see. So just as a piece there, yeah.
And I'm going to quickly just respond to that, because I actually, I love that question, because it ties back to what we're committed to. These quarterly impact reports will tie back, will tie directly into these platforms and these opportunities. That's the commitment. We come back to councils, who are municipal investors, highly accountable, but also to other stakeholders. So that's the level of transparency, so that we're coming back and we're talking about exactly. Here's the work, here's what we've invested, here's what collectively the ecosystem's doing, and here's how we feel it, or validating that it's moving the needle.
Thank you. Counselor Sullivan's up next.
Thank you, Your Worship, and it's almost like we planned it, because this question follows right on the heels of Counselor Harris's last question. I will ask the question, you know, certainly I do believe in the regional power here and the power of the collective St. John and the towns by the bay. But I do have to ask the question, as as the major funder and the major municipality, when I look at the KPIs and growing population by 25,000, increasing municipal property tax base by 30 to 35%, is Envision the regional growth agency satisfied if they hit those as a region, but St. John doesn't change its portion, I guess, something I'm going to be looking for? And I think we deserve, and all municipalities deserve, is a bit of an impact study on as these things go forward, what is the direct impact for our investment? So can you respond to that and how, you know, the city of St. John will hear from you on how the city of St. John is impacted as as your platforms move forward?
So that's a great question, and certainly an appropriate question from a municipal investor, councillor Sullivan. So what I would say to you is you've got a strong city manager at the table, and he has made no bones about it. It is really clear that St. John has to win. It's really important that St. John grows, and even in our strategic vision document, we have said very loud and clear to everyone, if St. John succeeds, the region succeeds, if the region succeeds, New Brunswick succeeds. But the core is St. John. You know, that is the urban center. That has to be alive and thriving. I mean, to Counselor Ogden's point, you know, students make a big difference, like that attraction play just on talent to bring that vitalization of students to your region, it is a huge lift. We've seen it, whether it's Halifax or other areas, that that is, there's a correlation. But that happens with every county of the population or any attraction. So make no mistake, there is a high focus on St. John, there's a high focus to make sure we've got a strong urban core. And the reality is, New Brunswick needs it. If St. John doesn't succeed, New Brunswick doesn't grow. So we know that this is critical.
So so will there be breakout reporting with specific effects on St. John with regards to your platforms, or are we talking about a focus? I guess I'm looking for feedback that's broken out. And certainly, I wouldn't expect it this early in the mandate as you're getting to go, not asking today, but kind of setting up for the future that I think it's important that we see how proportionally the municipalities are being affected by your work.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, collectively, we want to be a region. We're stronger together, without doubt. But with that said, every municipality wants to make sure that they get a return on investment. You know, we're not breaking out our KPI, saying, okay, St. John, we're going to do this and this year for you. We are looking at it with 10-year outcomes, big ambitious goals. But having said that, we're committed to data. We've built into the new model that we've got a position that is looking at our data, that we're looking at every decision we make, and we're committed that out of the gate, we have a regional dashboard. You know, that regional dashboard, obviously, will have regional data, but it also has individual data. So it's easy to slice and dice and look at this. So I think to your point, you know, early days, we're a year in, but as you can see, we're building this to have that level of rigor and scrutiny.
Super. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Radwan, please.
Thank you, Mayor Riordan, to Ms. Hicks. Thank you for your presentation. You know, and I apologize, I had to go offline. I've had connectivity issues, so hopefully I don't have any issues. So you talked about your dashboard, and I mean, I'm a big fan of, you know, being able to see dashboards, and everything, of course, is online. I'm just wondering if you would have plans on putting it on your website?
Oh, yes. So great question, so thank you for that. I'm really pleased to share that we are very close to going live. I would say within a week, it will be on our website. It's right now in final design. We have Bonfire actually working on it, a local company. They've been working with us for the past six months. We have finalized some of those pieces. We're waiting for some of the year-end data to come in. But I would say it should be up and running within a week, and I'm going to be happy to to send you all a note to say it's live. Check it out.
That's great, and I'll be happy to share it. I have a couple other questions, actually. So I'm just wondering, and you know, Paulette, we've known each other for a while, and I know that you probably have a very strong work plan going. But I'm just wondering when you would share it with us, because I want to be able to see, like, what objectives do you have specifically to be able to reach those KPIs? I just love this stuff.
I know.
I love, I love the whole strategic plan. How do you get this all rolling? You know, how is it going to look?
Sure. Sure. So thanks for that question. You know, we are committed to, again, having good communication, coming to council with good updates. I'm prepared to do whatever deep dives that we need to, especially in some of our strategy and that what we, what we're doing in certain platforms like tourism, for example. So there may be an opportunity even with some of the stakeholder sessions that we do. I know, again, taking up council time is very valuable, but we do have lots of strategies that we're building and I'm certainly happy to take and share even one-on-one or smaller groups if we want to do a deeper dive.
Sure. Well, I mean, I always love for the public to see these things because, for example, if you're somebody in the, in the community and you're thinking about opening a business, maybe they would know, okay, oh, they have this program and that one at Connection Works and that's where I go. I didn't know where to go. So getting this kind of information out there is not just good for our information, but maybe good to share with the public so that they know where either they can go themselves or they can actually send somebody to go. Another question that I have, of course, you and I sat on the board for Discover St. John and I see some KPIs in there for Discover St. John. Just wondering if you guys do have a COVID recovery plan? And if you do, I mean, obviously, and I just saw Ross Jefferson actually just shared some information that it looks like Halifax is bouncing back with their tourism online. And I thought, wow, that's great. Just wondering if you guys have anything that you could share with us today?
Sure. So pleased to share that we're moving in the right direction. I mean, you know, tourism, hardest hit will be the lasted to recover. We know that. Obviously, we're not in pre-pandemic levels, but I can share with you because we watch hotel occupancies as that national measurement as how destiny is performing. So when we look at pre-pandemic, you know, around 63% is where we were running. And we finished 2020 around 25%. You know, that was as of the end of November because the December year-end numbers aren't out yet. And I'm pleased to say we're up 10 points in 2021. We've moved that needle 10 points. So we're at 35% occupancy. So we're moving in the right direction. So as it relates to strategy, we are heavy into strategy. We are looking at next steps in what we're doing for 2022, which includes a number of significant campaigns, certainly tourism campaign, but also a campaign around talent and population growth. So we're building out those strategies and you're going to see some things that are happening fairly quickly as it relates to even a strategy around our place branding. All of this work is going to be launched in the next couple of months.
I appreciate that. And as an entrepreneur, I've always been very well connected with that group of Discover St. John group. And, you know, I am kind of hoping that the community kind of gets pulled back in to know what's going on, what's going to happen and that sort of thing, because I know that communication has not been too much as you guys are trying to get, you know, your tears crossed and your eyes dotted. Obviously, it's been quite an undertaking to reinvent this Envision. So I totally appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Now, is there any other counselor who has not spoken yet? Would like to have, ask a question or have a comment? Paulette Hicks with Envision St. John, we are spending money to contract those services. This is their KPIs. If you have any questions about their KPIs. All right, I'm going on second round. Counselor Ogden, if you have any, can you keep your questions or comments in scope of the KPIs for Envision? That's what our presentation is tonight, please.
Paulette, the really best economic impact that we could have is to use what we already have. Population density lowers taxes and that's a problem that St. John has, both taxes and population density. So building new buildings and building food halls and residences.
Counselor Ogden, can I get you to sort of keep your questions in scope to what their KPIs are?
Well, I think they have, there's a flaw in the strategy there, Verden, that could cost the city money long-term. And we have not had that chance to interact with Envision St. John. And we should be because we, as taxpayers, are paying for them. And so we need to know that this strategy is going to work and, and we need.
Now's the time to ask those questions in regards to their strategy. So she has her KPIs or if you have any.
When, excuse me, Mayor Verden, when is the time that we are allowed to talk?
Counselor, what I'm asking you to do is we have a presentation on the KPIs for Envision. If this is your time to talk, this is the strategy they're presenting. So now is the time for you to get clarification or ask her about it. Your opinion is different. What, that's something else right now, but what we have is a presentation here in regards to the KPIs for Envision St. John. I'm not asking for Paulette's opinion on anything. This is a strategic plan of KPIs. So it's our opportunity now to ask whatever questions we have in regards to that.
Right. But I was asked, I asked if I could do this quite a while ago before Envision St. John had their strategy together and I was told to hold off.
You were, okay, we're using up your minutes.
Coming in the door afterwards and spending our tax money, not in the wisest way.
You asked, can I, city manager?
Your worship, if I may, if this helps, I know the CEO, Paulette Hicks, has had several one-on-one discussions with many counselors throughout the region about issues that they feel are important and to hear their points of view. Clearly, what we do in terms of talent, attraction, talent pipeline and post-secondary education in this city is incredibly important. And Paulette, I don't want to put words into your mouth, but certainly listening to Counselor Ogden or any other counselors views on a, on a subject is important and can be done in one-on-one discussions with the CEO of Envision St. John.
Okay. Last thing I'll say is that we want our tax dollars to benefit the city of St. John. If we do this and everybody just moves outside the city, then we're not battling density. We have the buildings that exist now. And so we should use our money wisely.
We all agree with that and I think Paulette's mentioned a few strategies to try to, and also they will be looking back to see how St. John has grown, et cetera. So we'll, there will be those measurements in place. So I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Paulette? Yeah, I mean, I welcome, I've known Counselor Ogden. I know he's very passionate and certainly aligned with, you know, wanting to grow the city of St. John. And we recognize that for Envision, you know, we're working with our partners and it really is about how do we keep our students here? How do we attract more students? That talent pipeline's critical. But to your point, we want them to utilize the city. The MBA program is downtown. We want to enhance that. We want to enhance MBA, the MBA program and certainly want them to, you know, enjoy our city. And I think it is a great city for any student who wants to have that experience. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm going to go to Counselor Hickey because he hasn't had an opportunity yet. So Counselor Hickey, you're up and the clock's ticking.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll go very quickly. I'm not sure if there's any other hands behind me, but I just want to make sure that we ended on this, on the note we should. And, and, and that's one that says, you know, congratulations, Paulette, you've, you've done what you said you were going to do in defining what success is going to mean for your organization. And now we need to make sure that we're all working together, we're all grabbing an aura as a region to make sure that we're meeting the demands of this ambitious plan and meeting the demands of, of the region as well. So I think that's really important and I just wanted to make sure that that was, I think, you know, there's, there's, there's a lot of us were staying quiet and I was too because we are supportive of this and because we understand what the success means and because we understand how important it is for the region. And I hope that that's the narrative that comes out of this discussion because that really is. You've defined what success will mean for us, making sure we hit the marks that you've, that your organization set and we're here to support you to do that. Thank you.
Counselor, I agree. Counselor Norton, you haven't spoken yet, so I'll go to you next.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Your Worship. Paulette, thanks for, thanks for coming in. And although I've been fairly quiet and listening as it relates to many of your presentations, just anxiously waiting what the, what the, what the data says about your, your first year in and the return that our investment is, is making in the organization that you're obviously charged with leading. So look forward to that next update. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I will go to Counselor Harris. You're up next on round two.
Thank you, Your Worship. Through you to Paulette, just a couple more questions I wanted to try to hit off. One thing the Halifax Partnership does in their regional economic development approach is to produce that report card. Now, I understand that like, and that report card kind of lays out, hey, we're making progress here. This is slipping, this is failing, this is completed, this is almost completed. Like they kind of have that layout of their deliverables. And so I understand that's going to be in those quarterly reports or at least in that annual report piece. But with the dashboard, one question I had is it seems to suggest there's three different versions or three different stages to that dashboard. Did I read that correct? And if so, okay, and if so, it just seems like a long time to me. Not that I'm passing judgments, maybe you could help educate me as to why it's a reasonable amount of time for two years to get that full realized version of the dashboard up and running. I guess because if I'm looking at it, I'm saying, why wouldn't we just steal another very highly effective kind of good dashboard that's comparable and just start plugging in our data into that working dashboard rather than, yeah, go ahead.
Great question and I really appreciate you asking it. So the Halifax Partnership, I'm glad you brought that forward because I've spent a lot of time, I've had the pleasure actually of spending some time with the very first chair. The very first chair was Don Mills 25 years ago. His biggest piece of advice to me is take your time and be patient. Halifax Partnership wasn't built overnight. The robust results and when you look at that report card, took 20 years to get there. So to your point, I'd love to do it in a flash, but the reality is we need to mine this data. We need to validate it. Where do we get it? Is it correct? Does it meaningful to our region? So it is really important that we do the due diligence. We're very deliberate. We're very thoughtful in how we position our region. Remember, this is really about the health and wealth of our region, how we position it. So it has to be right. So although, you know, it does appear that we're taking three years to get there, hopefully it's sooner, but we're trying to be realistic. And that was really good advice from somebody who's been through this path. You know, we've got cheerleaders for us even outside of our region, you know, in, in the province of New Brunswick, but also in Nova Scotia. Our sister province and in particular the Halifax Partnership have certainly given us great insight. So we're taking that and certainly are happy to receive any information. But that really is the rationale. That's how we built this so that it can be really deliberate, but we want to get it right. And we also recognize that this isn't the dashboard of the agency. This is the full region. So we've got to get partnerships and stakeholders, everyone agreeing to share their data, which they've never shared before in our region for a community dashboard. So it's going to take us time.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does. And then for the initiatives that you listed, is there any perceived ranking of those initiatives? That was one question I had was, you know, return on investment is important. We've heard that. We've laid, you've laid out those first, you know, major initiatives that the, that the Envision's going to take on. When we're looking at that, how did we arrive at that ranking or how did we arrive at that priority list? Was it through a return on investment perspective or was it through? I think another thing you mentioned was a natural asset. Was it just, or was it more along those lines?
Yeah. So I've given you a few examples tonight. They're really, to give you the example was just to really, to help understand the model. What I would say to you is we have close to 30 platforms on a list. We're now working through that through an ROI. Does it fit? Does it make sense? What's the capacity? What's the, what's realistic? What are the natural assets? I mean, part of this is really saying, yep, we could go and create something new and there's opportunities to do that. And we've done that through some of the stuff like the Sea Shanty and, and, and working with a partner. And there's also our natural assets. Nobody else has a port right now. You know, we have this opportunity with the university and with the hospital to grow. You know, there are many communities saying, I'd love to have your natural assets right now. If I had a port that's about to be the greatest, the next greatest port in Canada going through COVID, sign me up. So we're looking at through a, a, a multi-level of lenses to say, you know, what's possible, which doesn't exist? What's our natural assets that we should be doubling down, leaning into, supporting the ecosystem and our stakeholders, aligning our priorities as a region so that we can get the best return possible? So all of that goes into this and that's the work we're doing right now. So there really is no priority list to say, these are the ones. We're just giving some examples so that people can understand this is a shift. It is a different model than what we've done before and it really is to help people understand how this agency can support the work.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. City manager, you have your hand up there?
Your worship, if I may, just to pile on to that specific point, the CEO just mentioned there is no priority, but I think this council does owe some additional information to Envision St. John in the coming months. We have talked about this before. We used to have, we had for the last three years, a very clear list of the three primary catalytic projects for the city. And we've been working and focused on those three. It is now time for this council to provide its next three to Envision St. John and that will help drive their priorities. So it is work to be done. It was identified within Work Plan 2022 that we need to identify the next set of catalytic projects for the city of St. John. We will, as staff, will begin that analysis and then we will come before council with recommendations for your deliberation and for your articulation of what the next priority catalytic projects are. That's work to be done in the coming months. Thank you.
Counselor Redwine, you've got your last three minutes.
Thank you. I won't need all of that, but thank you through you to Paulette Hicks. I just wanted to mention, I think Counselor Ogden, what he was really looking for within your KPIs is to see if, if it could be shared and I know, you know, the city staff do have done this as well, but share that, you know, how much tax-based growth through your specific objectives would have actually been specific for just St. John. You know, and I understand and we, we do want to collaborate, collaborate as a region. You know, I totally appreciate that and I want to keep that momentum going. But I understand where he is coming from because, you know, the public is investing a lot of money in Envision from the city of St. John and it is fair to be transparent with the public. So I'm just wondering if that's something that Envision might consider for having as part of the platform is, you know, what is a tax-based growth specifically in the city?
I may actually throw this one over to John Cullen because I don't know that there's a data point specific that we can pull out and say, this is exactly the work we've done, that is exactly going to move the needle on tax base for the city. I think that's really hard to do. I think there's tangibles and there's intangibles and I think we're going to be able to talk about that through impact reports. I think all of you and, and many of the public will, you know, hopefully look at the work that we're doing with the agency, how we're supporting partners, the work that we're doing that we can see growth, we can feel growth and we can point to growth with some data. Whether we can break it down to that five point, I, I don't know that we really can, to be honest. But I think, you know, this is part of the process. I think we continue to have these conversations and we look to ways so that you've had that comfort level because I know that's important for counselors and for your worship to make sure that the investments you're making really represent the growth and what you need to do from, from a St. John perspective. So we respect that. Okay. Now I see. Counselor Ogden, you still have your light on, so I'll get you to put that off. Counselor Hickey, is your light on? Okay. Counselor Norton, is your light on? I just want to make sure I've got everybody organized. Uh, or city manager, is your light on? Okay. Counselor Deputy McKenzie, you're late on.
Bingo. Listen, Paulette, thank you for coming in. You know, I really enjoyed the presentation. We had some really good questions. You know, from my perspective, growth isn't just your issue, it's all of our issues. And, you know, if, if I take an initiative on as a counselor and council brings in, you know, some people into the city, you know, we all take advantage of that growth. We can't say, well, that's because I did this and you did that. Okay. So it's really hard to do that. But I think overall, from my perspective, I just want to see the city grow and I want to see some wins out of everybody that's, you know, part of that pie and you guys are a big part of that pie. So, you know, at the end of, you know, your second year and you've got some, you know, initiatives going, whether it's the MBA or something else going on, you know, I think we're going to be happy to hear about that because it's all going to mean growth for the city of St. John. So thanks for coming in. A very positive presentation, some really good questions and I can't wait for you to come back any of your time and tell us some good news. Thank you.
Well said, Deputy. I will repeat that, Paulette. I think, you know, you've had, you've brought us a great presentation. It's very exciting. I wish I had your energy. I mean, it just is so, it just revs me up just listening to it all. It's really great. And I just.
It's really great and I just love that, you know, you've got these innovative things in there like the dashboard as well, the regional dashboard. And I also, you know, I, I always hear like so and so is doing this and so and so is doing that. And my famous line is that comparison is the thief of joy. Joanna Killen's heard this one before and it's so true. Uh, and so I don't want to hear what anyone else is doing, I just want to know what you're doing for us and what we're doing and I just think it's great. So thanks for coming in tonight, we had some great questions. And for all counselors, you can reach out to Paula Hicks at any time if you have any questions, if you want any clarification, if you'd like to have a one-on-one, she's always available, so please take advantage of that. And thanks again, appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you for the time, my pleasure, thank you.
All right, city clerk, next item.
Uh, your worship, uh, were you looking for receipt for information motion?
Right, sorry. So I will need a motion for, uh, receipt for information. Counselor Sullivan and Counselor Hickey on the question. Call in favor. Contrary minded. Motion carried. All right, next item.
Uh, next item, your worship is under Business Matters, item twelve point one. And this is with respect to St. John Transit, Transforming Transit Presentation.
Okay, uh, city manager, over to you to introduce.
Thank you, your worship. Members of council, uh, you are all aware that we are into a multi-year review of all of our agency boards and commissions. The intent or the main purpose of this review is to see how we might be able to improve effectiveness, drive efficiencies, and probably most importantly, achieve ever improving service delivery to our community. Tonight, as part of that A B C review, we'd like to focus on transit and provide for your information and awareness, some exciting possible changes that could occur to our transit system. The adjustments to our transit system began almost two years ago, where with support of the Transit Commission of the day, we approached the province to seek legislative change to the necessary legislation to allow more flexibility in our approach. That legislative change occurred concurrently with us examining a different model, perhaps, for the management of transit within the city of St. John. That effort culminated with the co-signed, co-approved managerial service agreement that this council approved last fall, as did the Transit Commission. That agreement, the managerial service agreement, basically states that the Transit Commission retains approval and oversight of all strategy, all policy, all budgetary considerations, all issues surrounding collective bargaining in the collective agreement and its employee workforce, and decisions related to capital procurement. The city, within the managerial services agreement, assumes the responsibility to develop on behalf of the commission, those strategies, policies, budgetary considerations, the capital plan, and the various aspects related to our human resources, our employees, uh, or the Transit Commission's employees more accurately, um, and, and, and the considerations associated with that. And on top of that development, also assumes responsibility for the execution of day-to-day transit operations within the city of St. John. It is in this new role that the city has that we have been exploring and do believe there is potential for a fundamental redesign of our transit system to eventually deliver more service, better service to our community in an affordable and sustainable way. Put another way, as your city manager, I believe that our current system simply cannot provide the service our community needs. Because no matter how hard we try to optimize it, the current system will not satisfy the requirements. Even the review we commissioned last year on behalf of the Transit Commission, the StanTech review, implied the same. They suggested modest changes, but nothing that would drive a long-term, sustainable and efficient and effective model. Therefore, shortly after the MSA was signed, we suggested to the Transit Commission that we, the city, develop a redesigned transit model for our city for the commission's review consideration and ultimately, hopefully, their approval. To be clear, based on the MSA, it is the commission that will approve any change to transit, not council. But it is obviously very important for council to be made aware of what is being considered. With the signature of the MSA, we appointed a very talented senior staff member, Mr. Ian Fogan, as the city's director of transit, responsible to deliver on the city's commitments within the MSA. And he, of course, works extremely closely, not only with the city staff and myself, but with the Transit Commission. He will be providing the bulk of the briefing this evening that is for your information. However, and probably more importantly, it's my pleasure to introduce this evening as well to offer words of introduction, the Chair of the Transit Commission, uh, Mr. Nick Cameron, to introduce this subject and provide his perspective. Now, Mr. Cameron has had connectivity issues, so he may be falling in and out, but I believe he's on the line now. And if he is, I'd like to hand over the microphone at this point to the Chair of the Transit Commission.
Yeah, I hope it's resolved now. Can everyone hear me?
We can hear you and welcome, Nick. Nice to hear from you.
Great, thank you, your worship, and good evening, members of council. And to build on what city manager just said there, I, I, I do want to say that since we entered that management service agreement, uh, the difference has been significant. Um, when, uh, folks joined the commission, myself, uh, a year ago and then others along the way, I, I had the realization when I started just how lean of a service it is. There's, there's no fat to cut here. Um, and they accomplish a lot with the resources that they have. Um, but, uh, of course, costs are always going up and it puts a lot of pressure. Uh, and a lot of creative thinking has been done and, and some solutions uh, found in the past couple of years, but it's, it's not sustainable. But I, I think we're, we're on a good path now with this management service agreement. It, it feels like we have some new energy, uh, definitely some new skills and talent, uh, with this agreement with, from folks like Mr. Fogan and Nancy Moore, Kevin Lawfree. Of course, the, the town, we already have folks like Charlie's, uh, Charlie Freaks. So we have a great team going forward. Um, and I think it's really important that we keep these lines of communication open. I'm really happy to see, uh, this presentation here tonight, but also just the, the talk that we've had about uh, transit for the past year. It seems to have been a, a hot topic at this council table and in the public for the past year. Uh, because it's an important service that people really depend on. So, um, the commission has endorsed this presentation tonight and the planning principles that Mr. Fogan and his team have come up with. Uh, we're really excited, uh, to see it move forward. And, um, it, uh, I, I will say that it is early, still early stages, uh, where it's important that folks are engaged early on. Uh, so I'm sure yourself and members of the public will have lots of questions and just rest assured that if you feel like you didn't quite get, uh, the answer you're looking for, it's because we are still at early stages here, but want to get folks engaged right from the beginning. Uh, so with that, I'll, I'll hand it over to Mr. Fogan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, and to your worship and council, uh, thank you for having us here for this presentation tonight. I'll, uh, I'll see if I can pull up the seamlessly pull up the presentation. So you're good?
We're good, okay. So we, uh, we have given this presentation to, uh, to the Transit Commission. We've also started some engagement with some key stakeholders, like the St. John Ability Advisory Committee and the developers for the, uh, community developers for the, for the priority neighborhoods as well. Uh, but this is the start of our, of our public engagement. Uh, right now, this is just high concept level. Um, with the planning principles in here and the feedback we receive, we'll, we'll continue to, to build this plan. So the goals of the transformation, uh, right from the beginning, we said our, our goal here is to increase ridership. That is the, the ultimate overriding goal of anything that we're, we're doing. Uh, we think to make a sustainable, uh, service, we need increased ridership to be, it, it, it needs to be desirable to increase ridership. Uh, we need to be efficient as well. We need the right-sized buses and less trips going where there's no demand, uh, along with an appropriate capital replacement program to make sure your, your service is long-term sustainable as well. Also, we know there's been extensive consultation in StanTech and Move S J. We know that people have called for more frequency, uh, better routing. And so part of this, uh, transformation is to oper- operationalize some of those recommendations in StanTech and Move S J. Just so you have a, a glance right now, this is your current service. Uh, we're at fourteen hundred service hours per week, seventy employees. We currently only use forty-foot buses in the regular service. In our specialized transit, we do use smaller buses. There are currently seven hundred and twenty-five stops, twenty-one routes, and cover about one point four million kilometers per year. And we do have the specialized service offered, operated called the Handy Bus. If you want to break down per route, this is what it looks like now out of our routes. Uh, you can see here, uh, the top eight routes really consist of almost seventy-five percent of your ridership. Uh, the, there's an X grouping of about twenty percent and then a bottom grouping of about six percent. The goal here again is to redesign a service to increase this ridership. So there's opportunities for change. Uh, as I alluded to before, we know, uh, there's some feedback that we've already obtained from the community from Move S J and StanTech. Uh, a lot of engagement was done and gathered in, in those reports. We also know the current service is, is not sustainable. We have problems with the service, the system of, of, uh, funding and, and replacement and, and the buildings, the, the systems, I guess, in general that support the service. And as Nick alluded to as well, we've also cut people. Um, the, many of the services now without people, we, we just want to have the service to provide them. And you know, what a popular opinion online is always to, to cut management will be, before the city came in to help, I guess, with the Transit Commission, there was a manager of about one point five. So one point five FTE, there wasn't a whole lot of room to cut. So everything's been, been cut in order to, to save the routes. It's just not sustainable the way it currently is, is, is outlined. And as the city manager talked about, our management services agreement here, there is a, an opportunity for increased resources and expertise to help. So we do have some values when we're talking about this, this redefining transit, a transformer transit. We believe that engaged employees and leadership are critical to the success of this transformation. Our, our bus drivers are frontline service delivery. They're the ones handling the questions, they get the complaints. Um, and we need, uh, our bus drivers to be engaged and leaders in, in this as well. Has to be relevant to St. John and our geography. It's also an essential service and we consider, uh, a value behind our transformation. We do consider it to be essential to many in our community. Part of the opportunities I think that we're looking at are things like the, the green option. We know people are willing to invest in being green. We know people will pay extra for hybrid vehicles or other green technology. And why, why can't transit be that green option for residents as well? And I think it can. There's lots of new technologies out there too that I think we can leverage and we do need to make sure that we're balancing service hours along with being fiscal responsible. So with that, I'd like to introduce you to Transit On Demand. There are currently about twenty other Canadian municipalities and probably double that in the, in the U.S. that have different systems of, of on-demand transit. What is on-demand? On-demand is really a technology-based stop-to-stop uh, transportation system. It allows passengers to call for a ride when they need it and where they need it and take them to a destination they need. There are, it's popular in apps, but there's also website and phone-in options. Uh, the way this works is that it, we no longer have a, a bus driving on a route where there's nobody waiting. It cuts out that waste. What this does is only sends a bus to where somebody has called for a bus and when they've called for a bus. Uh, so you won't see, if you're seeing a bus going and if it's empty, it's because it's going to pick up somebody, so it won't be empty very long. You won't have buses traveling around empty and you won't have them being, uh, too many at a times when people don't want them, but you will also have them available when people do want them. Whereas right now, in many of our routes, because there's not many riders, they're just not there at a frequency that is helpful. Uh, so with the Transit On Demand, if my wait time used to be an hour in between, uh, when a bus would come, I can now call for a bus when I need it. I don't have to wait for that, that hour interval. It also looks like using right-sized vehicles to fill the gap, uh, in, in the services. And it really does increase service levels by decreasing wait times. Like I said, our goal is to increase ridership. How are we going to get there? By increasing service levels, by decreasing wait times. This is what on-demand can, can help do for us. It also enables things like trip planning. Um, one of the neat options that, that we've seen with Transit On Demand, if you want to plan to be at a doctor's office at whatever address at ten fifteen in the morning, you can put your destination and then time of your destination and the, the technology can plan that for you and tell you to be at bus stop one oh two at nine thirty-five to pick up the, uh, to get the bus. And from there, it will tell you step by step, get on this bus, get off at this rapid transit route or it takes you straight to the point or bus stop to bus stop. So it, there really are some, some very good benefits for an increased service though. So when we look at our St. John system and how do we adapt Transit On Demand, which seems to have a, a very good, uh, I guess, response in other communities where it's been adopted, we've seen increased ridership. So how do we adapt that here? Well, when we looked before at the other chart, you saw that you had those eight routes that were really already composing of seventy-five percent of your riders. That we think is a success. That we need to double down on. If seventy-five percent of the people are already using the, those routes to that degree, I think we need to double down and invest in that, invest in that and we'll call that the rapid transit. We'll call that the, you know, you, you never have to worry if you miss one bus, another one's coming. Uh, that type of service. Then everything else we can look at the on-demand, we'll, we'll beef up the main line, beef up those, the backbone of it and, and create an on-demand system that's flexible, that allows us to feed into that success of the main line. This is just a map to show you a little bit of what the concept might look like. So, so we know the, the arrows here are just in broad terms of where this, the eight routes are that are, are very successful right now. They do run east, north and, and west. Uh, so we'll beef those up, increase the frequency, look at, uh, at making them very usable, very accessible. And then we'll create a hybrid service on, uh, beyond that, the on-demand portions to feed into that. Uh, also on-demand for local routes. So if you're only traveling from the east side to east side, you may be able to use the on-demand the entire way. If you want to get from east side to west side, you could use an on-demand on the east side and get you to that rapid route. That's all yet to be planned out. So when I say planned out, that means we have to have some planning principles. How are we planning these things? Well, we're going to look at right-size in the fleet, so we're not going to assume that we're using forty-foot buses, going to look at what the right vehicle is to send. Route simplicity, we need the most direct, quick routes possible. One of the things we'd like to measure is the time travel between using a car and using a bus. We know that's one of the reasons why people are hesitant at times to use transit is because it takes a long travel. So if we can make it the most direct, quick route possible between major nodes, we think we can drive traffic, uh, onto your system. Also, when looking at system designators, uh, we've heard some feedback from the community around things like three B, what does three B really mean? Um, so is there an, is there an opportunity there, uh, to add some showcasing of our neighborhood to, uh, how do we talk about our system and our routes? It's a public service, so we want to be careful here. We're not competing with private tax or future ride-sharing industries as well. This is a, a bus stop to bus stop service, not door-to-door. And looking at that, we also need to be, uh, more simple on our fares, so we call fare simplicity. We, uh, we need less differences in our, in the types of fares and make it easier for people to figure out what the fare should be. So what works best for St. Johners, again, high-use routes, we want those high-frequency, convenient, direct, uh, examine low-use routes for alternative to increase service levels, to get demand up, to get people on it. Uh, and examine local routes to feed into that major routing to, to decrease that travel time. If we can get people on those quick, rapid transit routes, it will decrease the travel time. There's also an assumption here in our planning principle that the service will always be subsidized. Uh, this is a, a topic that I'll bring up with council, I guess, right now. But, uh, all your transit services around the world are subsidized in one form or another. And, uh, what we'd like to do is examine possibly setting a subsidy rate, much, much like you have with other services, whether it be in recreation and that that be a, a, a rate that's set and, and assumed for, for planning purposes. These are some other of the planning purposes that we pulled from some of the, uh, the best practices. Uh, we think we can reach seventy percent of our population within one and a quarter kilometers of, of our rapid routes. We think we can get about eighty-five percent of the population to be not more within eight hundred meters of, of, of any bus. We think we can get about eighty five percent of the population to be not more within eight hundred meters of of any bus stop. Uh, according to best practices, bus stops should range between four hundred meters to eight hundred meters. Uh, less, uh, the the, one of the reasons behind that is the less frequent the stops, there's better on time performance, less wear and tear in vehicles, et cetera. And in in planning those stops, we really have to look at where are the nodes? Where are the institutions that are really important to create a stop? We know people are transient, but those institutions remain. So the hospital is always going to be there. The uh, retirement home is always going to be there. Uh, so planning your stops around those major institutions and nodes that are and and, you know, employment centers are always going to be there. Those are the type of planning we'll look at incorporating. For bus stops, we think it should be quality over quantity. Uh, we're looking at as well in increasing service as demand increases. So if we can get more demand for your on demand type service, we'll gradually increase service after that to hopefully reach more of the population. Uh, provide more buses, but we we need to serve the existing population first. Future ready. And this one, uh, we're really just talking about that, uh, there's, there's a lot of opportunities in transit to modernize the service. Uh, these are just some of the different options we have on modernizing our service, but we do believe we need uh, things, options like electronic fare collection, uh, you know, the computer aided dynamic on demand route planning. Uh, so people know where their bus is and when it's arriving, passenger counting data, locate or location data. Uh, bus stop amenity design, when you consider wayfaring, integration with active transportation. Uh, when there's a project underway right now, looking at decarbonizing our fleet. So are we going to look at compressed natural gas, electric hydrogen vehicles? Just what way are we going to go with a future transit vehicles to look at reducing our carbon footprint? We also need to consider a long term capital plan. We need to have a ideally, this council and previous council be very familiar with this. Ideally, would be would be funding our capital replacement from our operating budget. We'll present a plan that hopefully we can, we can reach that. And as well with our specialized transit, we do have a gap, but we don't have a a, an agreement in place with defined service levels and K P I reporting. That's probably a simpler one that we're looking to fix. And we do have buy in from the uh, from the provider that there should be an agreement in place that specifies those levels out. So there's alignment there. We will be doing some uh, change management and stakeholder engagement. Um, we're going to target uh, use a target engagement, I guess, with the with the some groups as as I stated before, we've already started. Um, we will be using the Shaper City website as well. Pending feedback from from council here, we'll finish populating that and get that up and launched. Um, and like I said, communicating change, our drivers are are key. Our existing users are are also key. Those are going to be our primary focus is is making sure the system works for those who use it now. And then we'll build on that. This is a busy slide, I'm not going to speak to it. It just talks about everything that we're using in the background to try to build this plan for you. And our milestones, our next milestones coming up are really the stakeholder engagement, which starts uh, now actually really started in December, I guess, with those previous groups. But our formal kickoff is now. Uh, we'll come back to you in in the spring with a completed plan. We're going to look at communications of this plan ongoing, try to communicate on demand, try to communicate just what these changes are going to be with the phased implementation beginning in the summer. And we just wanted to include a slide, the chair has already alluded to this, but this was the uh, the resolution adopted by the Transit Commission at the November twenty fifth meeting.
So your worship, council, if I could just close out this presentation. Um, and Ian, can you go on mute just for a second because I'm getting feedback? If I could just close out this presentation, I intentionally asked Ian to keep it short, keep it at high level. Obviously, the commission went into it in a bit more detail. But I'd like to close it out by just giving you a very simplistic example of what we're talking about. If I was living somewhere on the west side and I needed to go somewhere over to the east side, I would either use the app or if I do not have the technology, I would call into a dispatcher. I would say I'm at address so and so, and I need to go to address so and so. The app or the dispatcher would say, right, the most efficient way for you to get there is to go to this bus stop at this location. And a bus will, someone will be there to pick you up between this time and this time. You will take that bus stop to this rapid transit route that will take you the rest of the way. Or you will take, you will go from that bus stop to this bus stop over here and drop off there if that's more appropriate. The trip planning would be done for you and you would just then then need to follow the the directions. For this to work, we need to minimize the number of rapid transit routes to make sure there's no waste of money or resources there. But we need to, as Ian has suggested, those that are really valuable, beef them up. And if we trim the rest of the routes that are not, the regular routes that are not productive, we believe that we can save the necessary money that we need to enable the on demand portion of this entire system. Um, and so that is just to try to give you a bit of a visual of how this will work for a common user. And with that, I will shut up and hand the floor back over to council for any questions they may have of Mr. Nick Cameron as the chair or Ian Fogan as our director of transit. Thank you. Mayor Young.
Sorry about that. Um, it's been wonderful to have both you, Ian and Nick here this evening with us. I've been on transit historically for the last nine years since I've been on council. I certainly know how lean it is. And this is like a rebirth for transit, so it's really exciting. Um, I mean, transit, it's essential for our citizens, it's essential for growth. And it also can, we should be able to overlay our transit maps and that's where we want to drive growth in the city as well. So I mean, it's really, it's a wonderful tool in so many ways. So it's great to have you both here. You've done an amazing job with it and the managerial service agreement was the right road at the end of the day. Because we certainly did struggle over that of what we were, where we were going with it. Uh, but we do have a few counselors that have some questions or comments, so I'm going to start off with councillor Hickey.
Thank you, your worship. I I I just have to say, you know, the this council is coming into twenty twenty two, so bring it. What did we do tonight? We approved one of our major catalytic projects, uh, supported some recreation, transformed transit and then made all the K P Is to make sure we're measuring it. So that's, that's an impressive night, I would say. Uh, Ian and Nick, I, you know, I, we we knew, we knew you guys are the right guys to do this and and, you know, this is the transformational change we wanted. You know, certainly, Nick, as you know, I had a long tenure on the Transit Commission of three meetings. Uh, and and then and then got the boot with the new council. But but, you know, I've always recognized the huge importance of of transit. And and further to that, I hope everyone recognizes the huge change that this is going to bring. I mean, you two should be incredibly proud of a plan like this because it's going to, you know, it it really puts Saint John at a different level in terms of a small city. And now has our transit service competing at that same level. Um, with a with a lot of, with a lot of other places that are doing the same as as you've mentioned. I know this has been an idea that's been tossed around for a little while. So kudos to you both for uh, for supporting, for supporting uh, transit and and doing it the way you're doing and in a pretty pioneering way. I think it's, I think it's really exciting. I know I'm really excited. I don't have any questions, I'm just pumped.
Thank you councillor Hickey. You're correct, it certainly does up our game as a city big time. Uh, councillor Killen, I see your light on.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I would like to compete to get to sing the jingle if that is possible, if there is some sort of competition. Um, but on a, on a more serious note though, um, I just want to talk a little bit about the plan for the feedback piece. So already hearing, you know, the bus stops seem too far, um, eight hundred meters isn't okay, like different feedback from from some of the community. And I totally get that. So I just wanted you to maybe speak to like, how are we going to make sure there's enough feedback and data and all those good things to sort of make these decisions going forward?
Sure, no, through your worship to the council, that's an excellent question. Um, in, you know, anytime we embark on any sort of change, there's always going to be a degree of change management. The first thing people are going to look at, it's just natural human nature, uh, what am I losing? Um, what we're hoping to pitch here is this isn't a loss, this is a service enhancement. Um, so it, you know, it may take a little bit to convince people that it is a service enhancement, but it is a service enhancement. But when we look at the the planning principles, we're not inventing those. Those are best practices that have been adopted across North America. But really, when we look at, um, and I, we do take it into account the feedback, especially around accessibility and the distance to bus stops. But like, trust me, when we plan this, the the first bus stop we're talking about is going to be the, the, you know, the bus stop in front of the schools, the institution, the, you know, the where, you know, the, I don't know, the hospital as an institution for, as an example, the the, the old, old age home, retirement home, those type of employment nodes, those, those are going to be, and then after that, that's when you start to get the the distance. So you're right, if you're, hopefully, hopefully, we're planning the stops in the right way where the people who need them are close to them. So it's not arbitrary, that is just going to be, we're starting from the center of the city and four hundred, four hundred, four hundred, four hundred. It's going to be, it'll be, we'll take into account where people are living and where the feedback is.
That's great. Nick, did you want to chime in there too?
Yeah, just to add on to what Ian said there, that, you know, the the suggestion here of cutting bus stops, it's it's not to save money, it's to improve service. It really is for a service improvement. I think if you ask people, would you like fewer bus stops? The clear answer is no. But if you ask them, do you want a more reliable, more frequent service? Then the answer is yes. Um, but to make that work, we have to, we have to have a balance there. And and as you saw, we have seven hundred and twenty five stops uh, for the current system that we have. So we have to, we have to do a a pretty thorough look over that. And and I don't know that that's been done quite a while and and over the years that they have accumulated. And if you really look at it, there are some stops that are literally almost quite beside each other that we need to look at. So it, I I upfront may sound scary. I mean, reducing bus stops sounds scary, well, it impacts people's lives directly. Um, uh, you know, who rely on that, but just rest assured, it's not a, it's not a decision in isolation. It's one that has to have a benefit, like making more reliable service that's going to show up on time.
I appreciate that clarification and I think that'll be important for us going forward, that people know that very clearly because, you know, this is, change is uncomfortable and hard and, you know, we're gonna, but we're gonna get through it together. So I appreciate you both taking such a close look at this. That's the first thing I made a motion about at council, so I really love seeing this all come to fruition. So thank you guys both very much.
Thank you councillor. I'll throw in there too with the bus stops is that historically, we haven't been able to track who's using them and if any of them are even being used. So I mean, that's important too. Uh, seven hundred and fifty or whatever you've got, that's, I mean, it's wild. It's a lot of bus stops, so if they're not being used. So I mean, with the new tracking system and everything, I mean, it'll be very interesting to see what's going on with transit. Um, it it's so exciting. Anyways, I'll move on councillor Redwan, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Reardon, through you to Director Fogan. I just, um, I had a couple of questions. So, um, we have already talked before and I know that you'll be getting a lot of engagement from residents. So based on that information, is it possible that you might end up changing routes altogether?
Uh, I don't want to say no, but we, you know, we already have uh, the rapid routes, the ones that we're talking about. Like they're, they're already traveling between the major nodes of of employment and and institutions. So we know, like for instance, the uptown and the hospital, we call the, you know, the major nodes. How we get from one to the other may deviate, yes. But we we have to hit those major nodes for sure.
Of course, as I mentioned to you before, I get a lot of inquiries about redhead. Um, so I'll just kind of say that again, we have talked about it already. Um, on demand transit is so exciting and it's just such like thinking out of the box concepts, right? For us, you know, this is something very new to Saint John. Um, and when you're talking about green energy, my first thought was of course money. Um, councillor Sullivan will appreciate that finance is just on my mind from from the beginning. Um, and I end up thinking, is there federal funds out there to maybe get some, um, you know, whether it be electric buses or what have you?
Through your worship to the councillor, yes, there is. Uh, even part of the uh, the approved bilateral agreement has a specific transit investment uh, uh, portion there. But no, there there's other funding as well. Uh, so that's part of actually our our fleet. Um, decarbonization project is actually looking at those, all those sources of funding and trying to optimize those as well.
Wow, that's great. And I'd just like to make a quick comment if I can. Um, with any organization, when you're making some very vast changes, the big thing is, is to get people's buy in. And sometimes it's not always easy, as you know. And one thing that I do have to say is that part of my buy in is you, Director Fogan. I have complete confidence in the decisions that you're going to make and and Nick Cameron, uh, chairing at the commission, I have a lot of confidence there too. And so I think that that does matter. Um, you know, you've done some extremely great work in the past and it's been exciting to watch your, you know, your personal progress that you've had over the years with the city of Saint John. So anyway, I'm very proud, um, you know, that your staff and you're just, I know that you're just going to take this to the next level.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor. I'll try to be magnanimous, I have to grow with that, but I'm not, I'm not very good at it.
Uh, deputy.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, I'll just be very quick here. I have to echo councillor Hickey and Redwin's comments. I think we'd get the best team at the helm right now to make the changes that need to be changed, uh, the changes that need to be happening. Um, I, and I know that other people have uh, been around long enough to know this, but I know Mayor Reardon for sure. There was a time when we would talk about using smaller vehicles and there's just no, no way, we can't do it. You know, we're going to buy these big buses, that's the only way you can have a transit system. So we've come a long way to the point now where, you know, we're going to increase service, but change vehicles, you know, change processes and and it's all for the the best for the traveler. And I, and when I think about the four hundred to eight hundred meters, uh, it it sounds like a long distance. But you know, I'm sure there's going to be circumstances where you're going to have a three hundred meter bus stop and a eleven hundred meter bus stop, you know, depending on the circumstances. So I think that people need not worry about that type of thing. It's all going to be worked out in the end and their service time, their travel time will be reduced. So even if they do have to walk, you know, an extra hundred yards or whatever to the bus stop, they're going to save themselves a half an hour travel time. So I I think it's a win, man. Anyway, good job, guys, and I'm glad that we got you two at the helm.
Thank you councillor, or thank you deputy, councillor Law.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to follow the last two about Ian and Ian and Nick, like, can you mean how good they are, right? But to me, I I I think the idea that's coming up here is a good idea. A lot's got to do with the size of the city to see whether it'll work or it won't work. But to me, you follow the money. Like, I do not understand why this city does not play the cruise terminal. I mean, we have buses that come from Cape Breton, P E I, Halifax, all over New Brunswick. And they deadhead here and they deadhead home and they make all kinds of money here. The trips to Saint Martins don't got to be done by forty passenger buses, they can be done with the small buses. And and the whole idea is that we we don't make enough money to be able to service the people. But if we made money at other things with the buses, we could service the people. And 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 I don't think you can use the buses maybe that we have now. Because cleanliness and that is very, very important and the upscale of the buses are very important. But somebody said we can buy new buses, we can buy electrical buses and we would use the buses for the cruise terminal, we could also use them in Saint John. I mean, it's not putting people out of businesses in the city. These buses are coming all over, I even think they're coming from Quebec. The majority that come from Cape Breton, P E I and Nova Scotia. Well, if those buses can deadhead here to Saint John and deadhead home, don't you think they're making money being here in Saint John? And and I think that, I think that to make the project work, and I think it's a great idea, looking at the other cities on on demand, I think it's a good idea. I think we can tweak it and make it work, but I think we should try to make money. And 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 if we do make money, th- then that'll take the pressure off the inner city working of the transit, simple as that. I mean, it it, I could never understand being down the terminal on Water Street and seeing the buses come in with Nova Scotia plates on them, P E I plates on, I even think Quebec plates. And and taking all the money out of Saint John. And, and, and we have all, all the people who make it work here in St. John. We've got the tourist people that run it. The tickets are sold on the boat. We deal with the port. And, uh, you know, I, I, I think it's a no-brainer. I, I, I think that we're missing big time by making money here ourselves. Anyways, that's my opinion. And I think the idea that, uh, Nick and Ian about the on-demand, I think we can tweak it and I think we can make it work. I think we should try to make some money.
Thank you councillor. I will briefly say there are no more questions here. I will briefly say that that's always been a struggle with councillor Lo's talked about of sending a subsidized bus to compete with, um, private industry. So that's where that struggle's always been as far as whether we should use city buses, we should. So that's a, that's a question for another day. It's something you can figure out. Um, I, I will wrap up and I just want to say, like I said, thank you to you two for coming and for all your hard work and for, you know, making what information that we had. I think we do have the right team there. But you also, the difference now this time around for the public is that prior to this, putting this team in place, we had a subsidy that came to transit. And there was really no eyes on transit other than the commission. And so we, we got a subsidy for operations, but we didn't get money for capital and lots of other things that we needed. So there hasn't been that investment. With this, uh, with this service agreement now, you have the city's eyes are on transit and everybody's working. So they have all that horsepower that the city has at transit now. And it's, it's really, it's going to, it's changing everything for transit. And, uh, so it's the right team, but it's also the right resources and it's the right eyes on the job. Uh, you have a stand tech report also. So it, all these things together will create this success for transit, I think. Uh, it's a very exciting time. Uh, can't wait to, can't wait to jump on the bus actually. So, uh, looking forward to it all. Thanks for you two. Happy, uh, really, really pleasure to have you, both of you here tonight. More good news tonight. So thanks again.
Thank you.
Uh, city clerk?
Oh, uh, your worship, you need to receive and file please?
I need a motion to receive and file. I've got councillor Sullivan. I've got, uh, the deputy and, uh, on the question. All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, I gotta get my paperwork over here. Next item.
Uh, your worship, uh, next we have some submissions under the general correspondence section on the agenda. So item fifteen point one is a letter from N D Coalition of Persons with Disabilities. There's a staff recommendation to refer this to the city manager.
Okay, I would, uh, there are some questions in, uh, the, uh, author of this. Um, Shelley Petit has some questions. She has some concerns. So it would make sense for us to send this off to refer it to the city manager and we can get those questions answered, et cetera. Get some response. She's looking for some information as well, some data, et cetera. So, uh, councillor Redwan, did you have a question?
Yeah, um, thank you, mayor. I just, um, I'm fine with sending it off to the city manager, but I thought, you know, should we just send one off to, uh, Director Fogan as well? Since there are some transit questions, I don't know. It's up to you guys, but.
Well, I'll tell you, uh, what I think we should do is send it off to the city manager and then let him get that sorted out and that can go off to transit. City manager, are you good with that?
Your, your worship, yes, but just a point of clarity, Mr. Ian Fogan works for the city. So by referring it to the city manager, we will get Ian Fogan's input on the, on the transit issue. We will get gross input on the, uh, on the issue of, um, accessible units. We, we can do it all because it's all under city. And by, by, by procedure, by referring to the city manager, I am obliged to return to council with answers. Um, so, um, we, we just need a bit of time to put together, you know, an appropriate response and brief you as council on that response for your, for your support and/or endorsement.
Perfect. All right. Thank you. So I'll take a motion to refer to the city manager, councillor Redwan and councillor Norton on the question. All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. Next item, city clerk.
Uh, next item, your worship, fifteen point two on your agenda, a letter from P Conway with respect to flyer deliveries. Again, the staff recommendation is to refer this matter to the city manager.
Okay, city manager, um, these next two items are in regards to flyer delivery. So did you want to say, give us a little bit of an update on flyer deliveries?
Your worship, if I may, uh, well over a year ago now, and in fact, it's councillor Hickey who I noticed has his hand up, uh, put a motion before council to deal with the issue of flyer delivery within the city of St. John. And, uh, the, the associated challenge was with it, including waste. Um, at that time, it was agreed upon that it would be the second priority after we sorted out our solid waste management system that we are now putting in place. The solid waste, the new solid waste management system is nearing implementation phase. So I, I can tell council this evening that we are now at a point where we will deal with this next issue, which is flyer delivery. There has already been some preliminary work done on it. And I anticipate that we will be coming before council in the March to May timeframe, somewhere in there with our analysis and recommendations to council on this particular issue. And it is the same issue for fifteen two and for fifteen three on your agenda this evening.
Okay, thank you, city manager. Councillor Hickey, did you have a question or a comment?
I was just out of your worship. Hallelujah. Good riddance. We spend, I'm going to say about, my rough calculation was over forty thousand dollars in, in tipping fees on those stupid things. So adios.
Thank you councillor. Okay, so I take it, well, are you going to move this then councillor Hickey to refer this to city manager? Excellent. Now I need a second around that. Councillor Sullivan on the question. All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. Next item, city clerk.
Your worship, uh, so there's item fifteen point three, same topic, uh, from a different author, uh, W. Chason, uh, refer to city manager.
Okay, councillor Sullivan and councillor Hickey again on the question. All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. Next item.
And the final item, your worship, was an item that originated in committee of the whole. And now there's a recommendation from committee of the whole. It's item seventeen point one. And it's with respect to security information and event management agreement. And the resolution for council's consideration is that the city approved an amendment to the twenty nineteen security information and event management agreement in the form as approved previously on the November eighteenth, twenty nineteen with bulletproof solution U L C for the purpose of providing S I E M service to the city, which shall be effective as of January first, twenty twenty-two and end on November eighteenth, twenty twenty-two as discussed in committee of the whole on its meeting held on January tenth, twenty twenty-two. And further that mayor and clerk be authorized to execute any document ancillary thereto or necessary to affect the transaction.
Thank you. Okay, I'll take a motion for that. Councillor Ogden, councillor Killen on the question? All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. All right, before we sign off and before I take a motion to adjourn, I just want to say, um, happy twenty twenty-two to everyone. Twenty twenty-two is going to bring us challenges and it's going to bring us opportunities. Try to see the opportunities. Try to see the glass half full. And if you can't see the glass half full, get yourself a new glass and take care of yourself. So I'll take a motion to adjourn. Councillor Killen, councillor Lo, all in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. Good night, my friends.